Pardon me, it being 7:03 on Tuesday, March 27th, we have a motion to accept the agenda. We call it into order.
So move?
Second.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Maniani, second by Mr. Harris, all in favor?
Aye.
Are there any Watkins this evening? They're being done. We'll go to the representative of the town administrator, Jim.
Just a couple of things real quick. Last Tuesday, the emergency management team had a meeting with FEMA and MEMR to begin the preliminary damage assessment for the March 1st force storm. And this is the work to get the government to declare a disaster, get us eligible for 75% reimbursement. Our initial assessment had over $1.4 million in cleanup costs. That includes $300,000 to remove debris from Fourth Cliff that's now in the South River, and over $6 million in utility repairs, which for us are seawalls, revetments, and other forshore protection. Those numbers have gone up since last Tuesday because you've seen us still working. If you were down in Peggy Beach today, you saw the loaders and the trucks. That's costing us about $1,000 an hour for that cleanup down there. So those costs are mounting. We'll update those costs with FEMA. We're hoping at this point again for the federal disaster declaration to make us eligible for reimbursement. The board approved a wind turbine noise study. Previously, Al Bangert was working on that. We sent out an RFP. We had 11 firms take out the RFP. We had three responses. Two of them were not responsive. They weren't firms that did noise. The third firm, Al and I looked at their recommendations and we disqualified them. So at this point, we had two firms that did not bid that took out the packets because of the timing. So we're going to reach out to them and see if they're still interested. If they are, we're going to bring them in, have a meeting with them, invite the residents that are concerned about this, let them participate, and see if we can get a firm picked out depending upon the 30B requirements. We're going to try to move that forward as quickly as possible. And again, we'll bring the residents from Third Cliff that are concerned about the noise, let them have some input, and give us some feedback on the two firms that we have left. The moderators' meeting is here Wednesday, 4:30, next Wednesday at 4:30. The last thing is, we had our coffee with the crew Friday down at the Coffee Corner. Went very well. The place was very crowded. I don't think everybody came to see us, but pretty much everybody who came in actually ended up talking to us. So I think it was a very good event, and I think people were glad to see us. They were all unanimous in their praise for Kevin's department, Mike's department, and John's department for all this storm response. So another good one, as long as we keep getting good feedback, we'll keep doing it. So probably another month, we'll find another place and have another one. But that's what I got for tonight.
Thank you for hosting those. Any questions for Jim? All right, so we'll move on to the scheduled items. First on the agenda is to discuss and vote an outdoor entertainment permit for the Situit Waterfront Club for a South Shore Pier Recovery fundraiser. Hi, Mike?
Hi, Mara. Thank you for having us.
If you could just for the record introduce yourself.
I'm Mike Bullman. I live at 24 Jericho Road. I'm here tonight representing South Shore Pier Recovery. What we're requesting is that we can have a fundraiser on August 23rd at my marina. Last year, a lot of you were nice enough to come down to the quarter deck, which is one of our marinas, and we had it there. It was so successful there, we decided to move it to a bigger marina, put a tent up, and have it as a music fest from 6:00 to 10:00 on August 23rd. And we're all invited, and I'd appreciate it if you come, and anybody else that wants to. We're going to have music from 6:00 to 10:00, no drinking, and there'll be approximately, we hope, about 200 to 250 people.
Is that air, Mr. Harris?
No, what's today?
No.
It's a Thursday night.
There's only one person.
And Mike, I know you have all the butter information enclosed in your packet.
We did. We sent that out to the.
Any response to any of that?
I haven't. We invited a lot of them to the event as well. We've had events there in the past. We had Power Herd a couple of years ago. My daughter got married there a couple of years ago too.
And it's just from 6:00 to 10:00 P.M.?
That's correct.
Additional questions from the board for Mike?
Sure. Mike, did you ever consider maybe putting it at the parking lot at Pier 44? Your lot is great, but I mean, you've got the space there. I don't know if it rains, and you got bathrooms you could possibly utilize.
Heck, yeah. Yeah. Your offer, we consider.
Well, I'm only saying because I'm assuming that aside from maybe your cost for your music, I mean, you got the opportunity in a tent, and if it rains, you got issues. But there you have both inside and out. The fact that you're not having alcohol, I think, is great.
Well, definitely.
To me, it might be a better opportunity, then you can park them in the marina.
Yeah. By the way, do this, I'll bring it back to the board. It's a great idea. The only reason we're doing it at Bullman is because it's great. But let me talk to them, though. I think it's a great idea. Thank you for offering.
I'm only saying personally, it's up to the rest of the board, but I'm like, I'd be willing to waive the fee considering it's a good, it's a really important issue.
Yeah, it is.
To consider, you know, for what it's offering and everything.
Do we rent out Pier 44 now?
Yeah, we generally do.
No, we started right now.
I mean, the only thing I might say is, I'm not sure what the cost, you know, for just cleaning up or something, but I mean, waiving the rest of the rental fee, but if you do, you're going to have to do it anyways.
Right.
I think it might make sense.
Yeah.
With 200, 250 people, that's a lot of cars.
Well, we have Dogger on one side of that. It was a friend of mine who would let us use his parking lot. My parking lot holds about 50 to 60 cars.
Because usually, sometimes you park at the other one.
We do. Yeah, we do. Thank you. That's a great idea.
Consideration.
Well, can I amend my permit to either facility?
Okay, so a little further.
Got my shots available, and yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, just got my shots available, will be the big one.
Why don't we give you this one, and then?
If it works out.
We can amend it. Yeah.
Go ahead, Karen.
Were you, under the original permitting request, though, were you going to request Pier 44 for parking?
We weren't. We hadn't in the past because people just found their own spots. There's some down in the harbor. It's August 23rd, so it's warm. And then there's also nobody at the town ramp over there, so that, not at 6:00 to 10:00 at night. And Dogger always lets us use his parking lot if we wanted to.
Yeah, one way or another.
It's either or. Yeah, we could love, we'd love to use it. Yeah, thank you.
But you said that's a Thursday night, right?
It's a Thursday night, not a lot going on. That's why we have it at the marina. It doesn't affect my customers very much.
Rain or shine, Mike? So you did, did John say you had a tent?
We're going to have a tent, yeah.
Excellent. All right, motion?
Mine's not working.
I can find it. Move to grant an outdoor entertainment permit for the South Shore Pier Recovery Group for a private event on August 23rd, 2018, from 6:00 to 10:00 P.M. at the, well, it says the two, that's not right, at the Bullman Marine, at Bullman Marine in Situit Harbor.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Canfield, second by Mr. Danneke. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mike.
Good night.
I just got a message that the mics aren't working, so I don't know if folks can just double check to make sure that they're on, that folks are going to hear us.
They're on.
Okay, all right, just double check.
Testing.
Okay.
The ring light's on on this one. Is it? Okay. Mine's on. Okay. I just wanted to bring that to everyone's attention. All right, next on the agenda is the county contract discussion. I don't see Kevin, I see Sean.
I'm in there.
Kevin, you've been called off. We had a personal meeting this evening.
Oh, that's right.
At the library. Sean McCarthy with the Situit Engineering Department. Before you tonight is, I guess, call it a housekeeping article. We already have a contract with All-in-One Tree Services to provide aerial tree work for the town, assistance with the public grounds department. And he's been used over the last couple of weeks excessively with the storm cleanup. So we feel we're going to go over the $50,000 minimum contract budget at this time. Invoices to date are almost $30,000. And with the tree cleanup last week, we will exceed that 50. And his contract is good through October, so we'll have him do some cleanup, other than emergency cleanup. Some of the stuff that could push to the side of the road to clear the road now needs to be picked up. And some of the trees down the park as well are just stump sled standing too, so they'll have to pick those out. So plenty of time to still be doing that.
Any questions from the board? Sean?
Sean, do we still have the bucket truck?
We do.
Do we use it?
Yeah, what they're trying to do is outfit the front of the truck like some of the other tree trucks you see with a grate that protects the cab and the windshield up it. I know Mike and George were both reaching out with a fabric tape, want to purchase one to put on that truck for that reason.
Because they've had it for a while now.
Tree trucks.
Right.
Yeah, they've been using it for the streetlights, I know placement of the flags in North Situit and down the harbor too. And some of the tree locations, I have seen them up in it. I think when it positions right, you can put the truck to reach the limb at the same time.
Do we have the guys that are willing to go up in it?
Yes, we have the harnesses now. Yeah, full wall of wax.
Right. I knew we had one, I was just wondering what the status was.
I think they'd like to get that protection on the cab and use it more, yeah.
How many tree companies do we have? Is it just?
Right now, it's one, and he has three different services that he provides, stump grinding, the aerial cutting with his bucket truck, and the emergency tree work. The aerial mostly gets used throughout the year, the limbs that come down from older trees around town that are too big for the town to get involved with. Anything in the power lines, we call national grid anyways, so they'll handle those. But most of, this past year has been spent on aerial tree work, and a portion on stump grinding. But this emergency one is, no one is going to get the contract.
But that number for all of them, or just for that, you said you spent $30,000 on the year, is that on all three of those services, or just the?
Mostly on the aerial tree. As of February was 41. The stump grinding was 16.
One six, or six or?
16,000.
16,000.
So you look at it in three separate buckets? So if you're under 50 in any one of those?
Correct, or over 50 in any one of those. And the, is it the aerial that's going to send us over, or the emergency?
The aerial. And it's over, that's over three years, the entire contract length, it's not in a one year, one fiscal year.
Sean, just a question. I know that the trees from the Common had fallen down. Is there any plan going forward to replacing them?
I haven't talked to any about those, were the stumps that rang in my head in particular when I talked about the stump grinding. I think there's three or four of them that fell over to that first parish there. I certainly can.
I mention that because between that and the old Common, even some of the regular streets, you know, it would be interesting to have a plan going forward when trees come down to replant trees, so that there's not going to be a, depending if they, you know, you want to have a shaded, you know, roadway, I'm thinking like Tilden, they took down trees because of the bike path, but at least some point, have some kind of like tree plan to be able to kind of continue to have trees growing as, you know, mature at different stages. Some get older, some are younger. Continue to have that kind of like lined street.
Sure. I can talk to Brad as well as Karen Joseph, landscape, bar, town planning.
It'd be a good idea to have like a plan going forward. We are officially a tree town or state, or city, and we had the sign, but I'm like, I've never seen in the, and this is not a knock against anybody in the grounds department, it's just that I think, you know, it would be nice to have a plan going forward to make sure, or to ensure that the various streets have trees identified and then you replace them, especially if they come down in nice locations like the Common.
Is this one of those contracts that, like, we had heard two weeks ago, that you put out every year?
Every three years. This one goes out for these three specific jobs, so to speak, that can be renewed up to the 50, or we can extend them annually, which has been under 50 in the past.
Why couldn't it be exactly like the equipment that Jim's using for the beaches and stuff? Those guys submit bids every year. We saw it our last meeting.
In the last case, they're under emergency. We're not just following the bid that was submitted only because we're outside the scope of what we put out to bid. A lot of that equipment, I shouldn't say a lot of it, some of it wasn't put out to bid. But most of it is following in, and they all have their own prices.
But this could be as well. You know, if you have a, you know, you just request that they have a 50-foot sky worker, whatever it was, one man, two men, or whatever.
Right.
You know, I mean, it could.
You could put up it under the heavy equipment bid.
Right. It's not that big of a deal. I just wondered if it kind of.
I think what Sean is saying is, why don't we do this bid annually instead of doing a three-year bid? I think that's what Sean's asking.
Right. Do exactly like you do the other stuff. You know, and I mean, you know, and that's a local company, and that's great.
Yeah.
I forgot my other question. Yeah, it's fine.
Sure.
I should have written that down. No, it's fine.
Karen? Good. All right, I have another question. One last chance, or a motion? Okay, motion?
Move to approve the existing contract number 15-HW-99 to All-in-One Tree Service, Robert Dokendorf, for aerial tree service work for the expense in excess of $50,000 through its expiration date of October 26, 2018.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Harris, moved by Mr. Danneke. Any further questions? Done, all in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, Sean.
Thanks, Sean, thank you.
Okay. Next on the agenda is to review the last piece of our operating budget, the schools. Ron, you're welcome.
Thank you for having me.
All, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Apologize, we couldn't get you in last week, but with the conflict, so yes, it was a moment ago. Thank you for that. Great, thank you for the hard copy.
Ron, thank you much. Sure.
Is the copy in this?
Thank you. Yes, please. Thanks.
So welcome.
Good evening. Thank you. Thank you for having me.
If you, Ron, just want to do a brief overview of the budget, I know everybody's had the packet for a week or more, so folks can tell us through it, but I know you have tons of questions, but I'd love to hear about your vision and where you are with the rest of yours.
Sure. So I'll give you a very brief overview. The document you have in front of you is actually an update from our February 3rd budget workshop that we do. We do a Saturday workshop each year, invite the community, invite all of our school leaders and so on. At that February 3rd workshop, we had a deficit, and the budget you see in front of you is a balanced budget. So I'd like to take, bless you.
Thank you.
I'd like to take just a few minutes to give you an overview of the budget process and the budget we have in front of you, and then certainly open it up for questions. And one of the things I've found helpful is I've had some of these meetings in the community, is to do a section, open it up to questions about the section, so we could have that deep drill down. If that works with you, we can do that process as well.
Great.
So just to get us started, the document you have in front of you probably looks a little bit different than maybe some of the other budget documents you've seen in the past. The intention really is so that this is a front-facing document, it's a public-facing document. Obviously, the Board of Selectmen have lots of interest in terms of how the schools use their resources to give kids a world-class education, but ultimately, that's the taxpayers' money. And so the intention of the document is to show the taxpayers how that money is used. It's a deeper dive than maybe you've seen in previous years, but the intention's really just to give some transparency and to help every person in the community have a good understanding of how we use our resources to give kids education. So it's written in a way that any taxpayer can read and understand in terms of the school budget, right? So if you take a quick look at the document and flip along with me, please, kind of skipping past that table of contents. Part one, page four is our budget development process. As you can see, we're pretty close to the end of that process gearing up for town meeting. Page five, the one item I want to share with you is that this is really a bridge budget for us. We're in the process of developing a new five-year strategic plan for the Situit Public Schools. I'm really excited about that work. It's work that our team has already begun, both in the community and with our staff and with our leadership team. So we appreciate that this budget thinks about some of the key priorities for next year, and we're excited about starting to develop budgets going forward for the next five years. We're currently in the fifth year of the previous strategic plan, the C Plan, doing good work along those lines, and the intention of this budget is to serve as a bridge between the two. So page six gives you part two, which is really our educational priorities. I'll do just a couple of quick highlights for you in terms of educational priorities. First and foremost is obviously enrollment, right? That's our focal point. As you can see, our enrollment history, a couple of items I want to share with you quickly. First is that those two yellow lines that you see, those are really transition points in our school district, right? So when kids leave elementary school and go to middle school, and then when they go from middle school to high school. So if you take a look at our enrollment history, you can see changes at those two transition points. Those are typical in any school district, and the trends that we did in our analysis here are very typical in terms of transitioning from elementary to middle, and middle to high school. One thing that's really unique that's helped drive some of the aspects of this budget is that black step line that you see, actually follow, that's actually following the graduating class of 2022. That class is currently in our eighth grade right now, and will be transitioning to ninth grade. It's one of our largest cohorts in our entire school district and our community, and so it's a driving force in terms of how we think about allocating resources and developing our budget to provide those students services and supports. We'll talk more about that as we go on. Now, if you take a look at the next page, we go from enrollment history just to enrollment projections. Again, the big item there is really that graduating class of 2022. You can see some ups and downs in terms of our overall enrollment in our school district, and so our budget is developed to reflect where those student resources need to be Couple items quickly on page eight. So as we think about developing a budget, what's really important to myself and our team is that we're allocating resources and we're developing a budget that invests in key programs and key experiences for kids, right? And what I have for you here is just a couple of highlights. It's certainly not the entire thing. We have 400 pages if I went through the entire thing, but a couple of big highlights. Hey, the first is the investment in people. That's the work that we do. It's people. We've got a brand-new building in Gates, which is a fantastic facility. We obviously have to buy stuff, materials and so on, but the large majority of our budget is and should be investment in people. If you have great people and great educators, you have yourself a great school district. And as you can see, 83% of our overall budget is investing in people. Another big item that's important to us is making sure we have optimal class sizes. It's an important aspect of education. If you've ever been a classroom teacher, you know that your time gets divided amongst your students, and making sure that you have optimal class size helps you give every student that individualized attention, that makes sure they understand what we're learning about, and make sure that if they don't, you're there to help provide them that support. Lastly, was actually some input that we had from our advisory committee. They had asked a few questions about putting some figures together around investment in different programs. So I have a couple of highlights for you. We invest about $1.5 million in world languages. Our program offers world languages in middle school and high school right now. We offer about $1.75 million in arts and music, from the performing arts and drama to fine arts in art classes. And then about $3.5 million in STEM, which is science, technology, engineering, and mathematics. That's pre-K to 12. That also reflects new investments in elementary school engineering and technology, which has been outstanding this year. We're teaching elementary students to do programming and robotics, and starting to plant the seeds for getting them ready for the jobs that don't exist yet, you know?
And Ron, just excuse me, do those costs include personnel, or are those just resource and?
No, the personnel as well.
Okay.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Well, you mentioned class sizes.
Correct.
What are the class sizes? Which way are they moving?
They're not moving in either direction, so they typically run between 17 and 25 students, pre-K to 12. It varies obviously class to class and grade to grade. But we really try to target that optimal class size, especially in elementary school, for all the obvious reasons. Other questions on those? Those are good questions.
So any issues with supporting those class size goals?
Yeah, one of the challenges we're wrestling with this year is just closing that budget gap, obviously, and so, again, because 83% of your overall budget is going to be personnel, if you need to close that gap, that gap is closed in personnel, and that's the challenging reality that our team has been faced with this year.
That's been constant, though, hasn't it? It's always around, I thought, around 85%.
Yeah, that percentage remains the same, absolutely.
Go ahead, Ron, sorry, I didn't need to interrupt you.
No, that's okay.
I'm sure there'll be a lot more in-depth discussion after you're finished, but sometimes things come top of the.
They're good, they're good questions. So part three is sort of how we meet those educational priorities, right? And this is really the overall cost to our budget. So what I have in front of you is a comprehensive view of the overall cost to operate the Situit Public Schools. It runs at about $40.7 million when it's all said and done. Obviously, the portion that you're most interested will be the town contribution, which we'll get to in the next section, but I think it's important to break out just how we're allocating resources to provide services to kids. So three big buckets of work that we have, personnel services, which again, you know, well over three-quarters of our budget, contractual services, which are, you know, everything from, you know, bus contracts and leases and things like that, to services that are provided to students outside of our school district for special education, right? Those sorts of things. And then materials and supplies is exactly what it sounds like. In the next few pages, I have a brief breakdown for each school, and I'll be very brief in my overview, but again, if you have any questions, certainly stop me. First one you see is Cushing Elementary School. There's not a lot of changes in terms of the educational program for next year, nor are there changes tremendously to enrollment. And so same enrollment, roughly same enrollment, same sectioning and staffing. There's no major change in contractual services or materials and supplies for Cushing. Couple important points to think about when you look at Hadley's program and in the budget. Hadley's budget, while the building looks similar to Cushing's, is substantially different because Hadley currently houses some of our substantially separate special education programs. They provide services and supports for significantly disabled students. They do a tremendous, tremendous work in that area, but obviously, there are additional costs in terms of like OT, PT, SLP, all the specialized services that potentially significantly disabled students might need.
So Ron, when you say there's only 15 sections at Hadley, is that general head compares to 18 sections at Cushing, and then the other classrooms are occupied by special programs?
Correct. Yes. And the staffing for those, the ratios for staffing for those are substantially higher. So just a higher, you know, teacher-to-student ratio, and specialist as well, the student Wampatuck Elementary, again, you can take a look at the financials there as well. Relatively similar for next year. Relatively similar for next year. We do have a particularly small fifth grade cohort for next year, so we're down one section from FY18 to FY19. One other thing to keep in mind when you look at Wampatuck's financials, of course, is that Wampatuck houses the district's ECC, Early Childhood Preschool Program. A reminder about that program, that's a 60-40 distribution, which is 60% special education students, 40% typical or model students ultimately. And that program also, similar to Hadley, requires additional specialists, support staff and the ratios to student to staff ratios are going to typically be higher in those kinds of programs.
Just Ron, out of curiosity, why the contractual services at least are higher? It's the highest one of all the elementary schools and almost as much as the middle school. Just curious, it looks like it's software licenses. Why would all that be as high? Higher than the other ones? I'm just kind of curious.
So a couple of things that you should think about when it comes to Wampatuck's contractual services, if you want to look back on their total number. First of all, the software licenses are not just for Aspen, that's one example. That's like your SIS, your Student Information Services. It's a per pupil cost. But there are also specific software that individual students use. And so when you have students on an IEP potentially that might need software that's unique to their needs, then that software license is going to be tacked on potentially.
I only ask because it's just, the others seem relatively within two grand. This one's almost 29, so that's, I would have anticipated Wampatuck to be in the range of the other three. That's all.
Jenkins Elementary School, again, pretty similar to peer schools across the board. Couple of things to keep in mind when you take a look at Jenkins' financials. Jenkins also houses some of our substantially separate programs and some of our significantly high need students that have special education services. So again, when you look at things like personnel services, even contractual services, materials and supplies, there's a bump in there to reflect the needs of those students as well as the additional student to staff ratios in some of those programs.
How many classrooms are in Jenkins? Aren't there like 26? Why does that number ring a bell to me?
Number of like physical rooms in the building?
Yeah.
I don't know off the top of my head.
Well, if you only have 19 sections, you have 26 classrooms, what are we doing with those empty classrooms?
So we're working on plans for next year. Currently, well, the beginning of this school year, some of those classrooms were held by things like REC, Recreation had some of those classrooms.
Right, but they're not there now.
Right, but they, but they were there at the beginning of the school year, right? So we try to build our year starting at the beginning of the school year. So those spaces are... Right. So spaces are vacant currently because they just made that move and we don't want to disrupt the students' experience by moving them around. So there are empty spaces. If your question is, are there empty classrooms in Jenkins? Yes.
Do we know how many?
I want to say there's four, but I could be wrong about that.
I'm trying to do that in my head. I think there's probably around four.
I think there's four, because two from REC.
Yeah.
So will you redistrict? You'll redistrict to fill those four in the next fall?
We won't redistrict our school district. We are looking at thinking about the programs and services that can be used in those rooms differently, but we don't have that plan public ready at this time.
Right. And Paul, that being such a newer school, maybe off the top of your head, not going to hold you to it, energy costs, any cheaper or is it that much larger? I'm trying to think, is it that much larger than the others?
70,000 square feet, 74,000 square feet versus Cushion, which is 40.
Off the top of your head, yeah.
Yeah.
So is it the same?
Yeah, it's about the same per square foot cost. Might be a little bit more electrical because they have a little bit more opportunity than an older building does, you know, for electrician. We don't, we only have, we have two boilers that run natural gas and we have two that can, they run pretty much a lot at Jenkins. We are only one will run at Cushion and then we'll go to the next one. And Wampatuck's the same way, you know? But Cushion, I mean Jenkins being, you know...
Two floors.
Two floors and basically a third floor down below.
Right.
It runs a little bit more energy wise, it would be, we have their big gym too.
Yeah.
Six thousand square foot gym.
All right. I was just curious, that's all.
Yeah. And plus, when you have a gym, you use it an awful lot more.
Right.
Electric, you know, it's open on Saturdays and Sundays and...
Get more use.
Yeah, it's a lot more use.
Changing gears, Gates Middle School gives you an overview of the Gates program and overview of their financial analysis as well. So again, I mentioned in the first portion, we talk about enrollment. We've got that graduating class of 2022, which is currently in eighth grade, moving on of eighth grade, moving over to, you know, ninth grade ultimately. And therefore the services and resources have to follow those students. So you can see that adjustment both from the Gates, but also as you flip to the next page in the high school, those adjustments in the high school as well. Personnel, resources, sometimes contractual services for individual students, right? Those sorts of things. High school, take a look at high school. So again, you see that overview from graduating class of 2022, moving over to the ninth grade. No substantial changes in our high school's overall program for next year. Couple of highlights just to share with you. Virtual high school program continues to be in use over in our high school. Something that allows students who are looking for a class that we typically couldn't run if we wanted to run a class of one student who's interested in comparative core day anatomy and we only have one student, we can run that through virtual high school now, right? So that's that $18,000 allows for individual seats for students, things like that. Other than that, pretty much the same from FY18 to 19 with, you know, additions for staffing accordingly. Oh, admin and teachers and specialists, that is a, that change from the, you know, 847 to the 754 in FY19 reflects only an accounting adjustment and not a reduction in staffing. There was one staff member that was accounted under teachers that, shouldn't be counted under admin, that should have been under teachers. And so that adjustment has taken place for this year.
What was the adjustment again, Ron? I'm sorry.
There was one staff member in the FY18 budget that was accounted under administration that should have been accounted under instruction essentially.
Oh, okay.
And so we made that adjustment.
Another line.
It's accounting, but I get that question sometime. Why is that going down? There's no reductions in administrative staff in the high school. It's not the intention.
Okay.
Or custodial staff for that matter.
Gotcha.
Next item is the, you know, district wide services. Lots of questions often come up on a couple of these items, so I'll kind of get ahead of those. First and foremost, you usually get the questions about special education outside tuitions, right? Just over $3 million in that. So again, quick overview on this. This is services that are required for students to meet the needs of their IEP, but that ultimately couldn't be served through the situ at public schools. And so we work with outside institutions to provide those services and pay a cost accordingly. That cost includes the tuition for that student to go to school, you know, care for school for the blind, whatever it might be, as well as transportation to and from that location. And that's a requirement by law for municipal institutions to be able to do for students. And that fluctuates pretty dramatically from year to year based entirely on the needs of students. Another item just to bring to your attention is the bus leases. There's a pretty substantial increase in leasing our buses from FY18 to FY19, about $165,000 to $200,000. Leasing the buses allows us to have brand new buses. The fleet is under three years for the most part on our roads, which makes it great, safe, efficient buses, but also very expensive to maintain that cost year in, year out.
So is that just a contractual increase, Ron? As a result of the contract negotiations?
It is. And, you know, Paul did a brilliant, brilliant job getting us a fantastic entry price and now that we're in, we're, you know, negotiating the new price for the next couple of years and costs have gone up. And so we're working back and forth with the company, but it looks like we're in land right around $200,000 to update the new leases for the fleet of buses.
The original 13 we got at a really good price, at $9,500 each. I'm budgeting 12, maybe 12.5, $12,500 for each 13 buses that we have up there. And hopefully I'm going to be under 12, is the hope.
The contract requires them to do all of the maintenance and those costs are separate?
No, we do those, yeah.
Okay, and that's reflected?
In some of the contract services and natural, building needs and supplies and it's all transportation fuel.
All that stuff, okay. So that's in addition to, okay.
Yeah, that's all in addition to that. It's a lot less.
Because they're newer.
We have the fire station one day at the fire station.
Right.
We lowered our contractual costs because we're not paying down in the driveway. So we're doing the maintenance out here with none of the telltale signs that we used to be a bus depot. Here we had tires all over the place, remember?
Mm-hmm.
Quite a few years back, we had that little trailer sitting there with all our parts in there. Dave has cleaned that up. We found homes for the tires because we don't need them as much. And we're working out of this, I think it's, if it's the closest bay, yeah.
Yeah, it's the closest. Thank you.
So Paul, the $12,000 is just to lease the vehicle?
Yes, 13 of them. Plus we have four others. We have a wheelchair van, a wheelchair bus and three other buses. So there's about 13, 17 buses. And we have two that we own, that the town owns, that we kept. We did not sell ours.
So no, that doesn't include driver, fuel?
No.
And did they cost $90,000 each? How much did that cost?
Yeah, about $90,000 if we were to buy, yes. We would be outlaying $1.2 million if we had to buy 13 new buses. Of course, they would last a lot longer.
So you sold the old ones you just said?
Yes.
So where does that, where does that go and?
Went to the general fund. It wasn't a whole heck of a lot.
Oh, okay. $100,000 went in?
There's not a big market for used buses that are more than 10 years old.
Right. It's South America or it's out of the United States because you can't really run them.
Here, okay.
Did you have anything, did you want to keep going before we open up the questions?
No, questions please.
Are you sure? You want to just go around anything or?
I can give you the rest on the resources. We have any questions on the operational side?
Keep going, I think folks will continue to have questions.
Sure.
Eventually I'm going to open it up one by one so folks can ask me probably more than just one question.
Brilliant. I'll be brief. So the page 17 is the one I think most people are interested in. That's the resources ultimately. I have an executive summary for you. The dollar amount that obviously this board is most interested in is the town contribution, the FY19 contribution, $37,151,699. I share with you as well a per pupil expenditure that's generated from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. Just gives you a sense of where situ stands in terms of overall contribution per pupil compared to regions and towns, you know, in this area. Two important points to note about that per pupil. That is back two years because the department just takes about a year and a half to ultimately calculate this information, but helps give you a sense of where we stand in terms of our contribution to education. Go to the next page.
Not better off than we used to be.
Gives you an understanding of historical context to the town situates financial contributions, obviously. It's built off the financial forecast. You can see the FY19 as well as FY20 projections, contributions both in terms of finite dollars and proportions, percentages over time. The next couple of pages just give you an overview of the rest of our resources that we try to identify each year to provide services to students. State and federal grants, oftentimes there's misconceptions about what a state and federal grant is and is not. And so this gives the community an overview of each of the state and federal grants, how that money is used. Big picture, there's oftentimes strings attached to every grant. It can only be used for certain things and that in almost all of these cases, that the state money is ultimately tied to federal money, which means any changes in the financial outlook on the federal level eventually trickle down here to situ and the grants that we receive as well. I'll skip through that and of course, if there are any questions, I can give you more information about it. To go to page 21, I want to just briefly highlight circuit breaker, reminder about circuit breaker. It's the mechanism that the state uses to provide reimbursement to communities for substantial costs incurred to provide special education services to students. Essentially, the trigger is essentially four times over the typical amount, they call foundation amount. But that is in arrears one year. One thing that's important to note for FY19 is that there's actually a reduction in circuit breaker that's pretty substantial for all of Massachusetts, but certainly for situ obviously. That reduction occurred mid-year this year. They reduced the overall proportion of circuit breaker going out to school districts by a few percentage points. When it's all said and done, it's around $60,000 to $70,000 decrease in circuit breaker resources that we should be expecting. We've been working very closely, Mr. Cantwell's been incredible, incredible advocate for situ in our school district and all the local superintendents have been reaching out to the state to try to encourage them to understand what the impact of their decision was, as well as to encourage them to reinstate the maximum amount. We've got mixed reviews in terms of how that's going at the state level. So the budget in front of you is a very conservative budget, budgeting with the assumption that that won't come through, but it's entirely possible that it may be fulfilled to the current levels.
So is it 72 or it's dropping from 70?
It's dropping by about $60,000 this year and potentially a little bit more for next year.
So we pay the first 33 or something?
No.
No, we pay it all upfront and then this, it's called foundation, which is similar to the per pupil essentially. So if a school district requires to pay, let's just say the per pupil for easy math is $10,000, you need to have four times over that, right? So if you've got to pay $40,000, circuit breaker kicks in after that and will reimburse you a proportion of what you pay after four times the foundation. So you've got to invest a substantial amount of resources into providing those services. And then in arrears one year, they will, the state will reimburse you around 70% and that's sort of up for debate right now of that amount after four times foundation.
So what are they recommending, going from 72 to 70?
No, from 75 to 68 is what we're at?
65.
65.
65 is what they're looking for in fiscally in 19. 68 is about what we're going to get this year.
So 68 to 65?
Yeah. Well, it was at 72 we built the budget last year in August. They changed it to 68. We got hit for $70,000 in August and September.
In FY18.
In FY18 at the beginning of our school year.
It went from 72 to 68.
Yep.
So these budgets, the FY18 budget numbers don't reflect that reduction that are on this page on 21?
No, no.
That's going to be below 60.
But it's the FY18 cost that funded FY19.
Right.
So that was set. FY17 cost that funded FY18.
Right, okay. Got it.
So I'm happy to answer all questions about grants and so on. One other resource that our school district uses obviously is revolving funds offsets. Often get lots of questions about these because these are fees for some kinds of services. Give you a brief overview, but open to any questions that you might have. We have about $1.4 million in our overall budget that comes from offsets. Ideally, a school district would not want to charge any fees of any kind. That remains our commitment. We recognize however, that in difficult fiscal times, $1.4 million is very hard to make up. So while our intention is to try to not provide, we're trying to not charge fees for any services, we recognize that in charging those fees, it offsets about $1.4 million in costs that can provide students a wide variety of services. Couple of highlights to that, obviously, non-resident tuitions is something that lots of questions about. I'll share a little bit with you. That's when our school district provides services to students outside of situ public schools. We have a tremendous special education program here and students from other school districts get services here in situ because we offer programs that regional communities may not offer. They provide that per pupil amount that I showed you earlier in the resources to provide the services for those students. In other cases, they provide a set rate for a particular program, just depends on the individual program. And those resources go to provide support for that program as well as any other programs that we're offering if there is additional funds available.
Ron, full-time, full-day kindergarten?
Yep.
Two years ago they were talking about making that mandatory. Is there any other discussions or movement on that?
It continues to be a conversation at the state level. Frankly, it's good practice to allow students to be able to have kindergarten in some capacity. I'd love to see the state move that to mandatory for all students. I think that'd be beneficial for kids across the Commonwealth. The data shows unequivocally that students that get kindergarten and quite frankly, students that get early childhood, preschool generally are going to do better by the time they get to third grade and beyond. And when you get to that third grade point, right, that's about read, not just learning to read, but reading to learn at that point. So if you're doing well and you're being successful in third grade, that's a clear indicator for your success into middle school and beyond into high school. So the data is overwhelming. I think what the state and the federal government are really wrestling with is just the cost to be able to do that in every school, you know, in a state or every school in the country.
But that's more my question, because there's a half a million dollars that we get in revenue from the tuitions for full-day kindergarten. If they get mandatory, then they wouldn't pay cost.
That's correct. And the state would have to find a way to provide resources to communities.
So, but that's not in the next couple of years?
Not that I've seen.
If I may, if you go back to 21, Tom, you see that full-day kindergarten grant in the last line of the grant page on 21?
Yep.
It ended in fiscal year 17 for us.
But they do a pilot and they help you through year one.
Exactly right.
You're on your own.
Well, my point is if they ever do make it mandatory, that it's going to be a big hit to the budget.
That's correct.
They're trying to get the buses taken back.
Right. And we wouldn't be alone with that. I mean, there'd be communities around the state and around the country who would wrestle with that. And I think that would be a good, honest conversation with the government around how you, how you could fund that, right?
Right.
Page 23, quick overview of offsets. It gives you a snapshot, answer any questions that you have on that. And then page 24 is probably the most important page for everyone, which is the snapshot of the overall budget. It outlines between FY18 and FY19, personnel, contractual, materials, costs, again, 40.7 is the total amount for costs to provide education to our students. And then you see the breakdown for resources, town contributions, state, federal grants, as well as offsets. Couple of things to keep in mind, you notice that the FY18 balance was in the negative by about 450. So one of the challenges that we've wrestled with this fiscal year is just overcoming an operational deficit that's built into FY18. I'll talk a little bit about how we got to a balanced budget in a moment, but what you see in front of you is a balanced budget with a very small surplus of $26,000 when it's all said and done. I would love to be able to, in the long term, be able to develop budgets, get a little bit more wiggle room there, in the event that you've got students who have unforeseen needs, material supplies that are unforeseen that would require, you know, purchase in September or October, or a teacher who has a great idea for a new program that would want to be able to fund and support. One other thing that's important to note with this budget, if I may, is just to share a little bit with you about part six, which is the beyond level services, page 25. In early fall, I sit down with our team, we identify what the key needs in our school district are. We put together this list, and you can take a look at your appendices for the more complex, deeper list of our top priorities to fund going into the fiscal year. These items or in staff positions, we feel are vital to provide services to our students, but they are not currently reflected in the FY19 budget. And in effort to close that budget gap and create a balanced budget that I can present to you in this community, these are items in staff and positions that are not funded, but we feel strongly and hope strongly that in the future we'll be able to fund.
But you're not reducing any staff, correct? Instructional, aside from retirees?
We may. That actually brings me to the next document, if I can share it with you.
Sure.
Thank you. So what I have in front of you is a memo that I also shared with the school committee when I asked them to vote the budget in as well. I'll give you a brief overview of it. I guess I want to just first start by saying, I appreciate the investment that this community has in its educational system. We are fortunate here in Situate to have a community that's invested, as it is, in its system. I appreciate the work that our team does to make sure that we use those resources efficiently and effectively, and strategically and thoughtfully. I also recognize, though, that it's a challenging fiscal climate for the Situate public schools this year. We need to be honest about that. So I want to share with you what that climate is, as well as some of the steps outlined to be able to close that budget gap and present a level services budget. Just a couple of things to keep in mind. The first, FY18 did identify a pretty significant shortfall, about $450,000 when it's all said and done. There's also some projected reductions in state and federal funding. It's a difference of about 3, 3.5% as well as a decrease in offsets, it's about 5%. You can see that all in the budget outline. So when it's all said and done, on February 3rd, when I sat down with our school committee and our school leaders in our community, we had a potential shortfall of about $950, $960,000. That's about $750,000 shortfall for FY19 that includes about $217,000 that reflects retirements ultimately, right? So we had to come up with a plan that helped close that shortfall, but do in a way that maintains giving every kid a world-class education in our school district. If you flip to the next page, it gives you a brief outline of how we did that. Essentially, three buckets of work that we took a look at. As I mentioned at the beginning of my presentation, just about 85% of our overall budget is personnel, and so it does impact personnel, which is challenging. The first bucket of that component really in personnel is potential retirements ultimately. And so about $340,000 in retirements. We have a very competitive salary rate here in Situate. We attract great educators, and we keep great educators because we have a great salary rate. So when a teacher retires, the top of that salary rate, we can bring in a highly qualified, great educator the following year and still have some savings overall for the budget. And we do that over the full list of potential retirees. That reflects about a $340,000 savings for FY19. The second under personnel services is savings due to enrollment. As I mentioned in the enrollment portion of the presentation, we do have some decreased enrollment in some buildings. And so just naturally, through decreases enrollment, you have savings, about $151,000 when it's all said and done. That's a combination of section savings, so just fewer sections in particular schools because there are fewer students, as well as savings where students' services are no longer required because they have either graduated or, you know, moved to a different program potentially. The last one's the most complicated. It's about $314,000 in reductions in force. That's a potential, because we recognize there are still some moving parts in terms of the budget, things like circuit breaker that might ultimately come through. We're still working on contracts going forward for FY19 in the next couple of years. But ultimately, if we can't find a way to close that budget gap through some of those reasons, then we'd have to reduce about $315,000 in staffing. And that's just the reality of the amount of resources that we have compared to the amount of needs that we have in our school district. It's my sincere hope that we can work through that and not get to that place, but it's important to be honest with ourselves, and while it's a tough conversation to have, it's an important one to have and be out in front of. Two other places where there are reductions to be able to close that budget gap is contractual services. When we identified this going into this fiscal year, I asked our team to take a look at literally every contract that we have and attempt to renegotiate all of them. Bus leases to every special education, out-of-district placement, you name it, take a hard look at every single one. Team did a brilliant, brilliant job in doing all of that and saved about $90,000 when it's all said and done. And lastly, materials and supplies. Similar conversation that I had with all of our school leaders. We want to make sure that we exhaust every option before we have to look at staffing. And so I asked them to take a hard look at materials and supplies, think about efficiencies. We do a lot of online learning now, and so what does that look like? How does that impact your materials and supplies? Again, just a hard look at those things to be as efficient as we possibly can so that we can close this budget shortfall without impacting our number one resource, which is our people. So that ended up being about $100,000 in savings, and again, kudos to that team who did yeoman's work to identify those. So when it's all said and done, targets to be able to balance this budget was about $963,000. Total savings projected about $989,000. That leaves you with your 26 when it's completed. Not easy work by any stretch of the imagination, and certainly not, this is the hard part of the job without a doubt. But our goal, again, is to make sure that we provide every kid with a world-class education and do in a way that's sustainable over the long term. And we're hopeful that this plan, the FY19 budget and beyond, is something that is sustainable and something that we can go forward and not have to have this kind of plan in the future. So I wish I was coming to you today with fantastic, wonderful budgetary news, but you should be happy to know that you've got a good team here in this community, working hard for this community as well.
And just before I turn it over to the folks, the school committee approved a $37,151,000 on this.
Correct.
Okay. I wanted to be clear on that, they approved that.
Yes.
Questions? Anybody has one on my line? John?
Sure.
I know, I always.
Lucky you.
I always.
I'm always the first. You know, you hit the number. That's the number that we obviously try to give you with our budget, and I commend you on hitting it. I think what I'm looking at, though, is, you know, when we look at the resources on page 23, and we see that, you know, the numbers, the revolving subtotals from FY15 up until, you know, FY18, they keep going up, which really means that, you know, more and more people are paying for, for, you know, whether it's athletics or whether it's the bus fee. And I think that's indicative of, hopefully, the school committee is going to start looking at this a little differently and being to try and like build in into their budget how they're going to pay for this, or have a stark contrast of what the town needs to do. When I was looking at your beyond level services, you know, there's a prime example of over $680,000 that, right now, we're not funding for a better school system because we're just trimming and trimming and trimming. And I keep, I think it's a fair discussion that the commission, or committee should be thinking about is, you know, the last operational override was back in 2011, prior to that was 2007. You know, they're going to have to maybe take a look at this and say, maybe we should be, they should be talking about that and discussing it. Obviously, we're looking at things from a capital perspective. I know you're going to be doing the strategic plan for the schools, trying to figure out the elementary component and then come back to us, and we can talk about it. Because I think the town needs to identify this is a priority, their education. I know the numbers are going down, but I mean, from a curriculum standpoint, I need to ensure that we're not just treading water from an academic standpoint. Because a lot of these things that, you know, beyond level services, they're good things that frankly, we should be trying to incorporate, but your budget just isn't going to hit it. And it's not that, you know, the town side's going to be able to pay for it. I mean, you're looking at 680, and then you're looking at, you know, what's the other, you know, 1.1 in 2015, it's up to 1.4, almost 1.5. So I'm like, what's happening in essence is a lot of these, we used to be paid by your taxes, and now what's happening is they're being pushed on, onto the users. And I guess maybe that's the way to continue to do it. I just think that it certainly is unfair to a lot of families who can't afford it, you know, is a big question. And I think, you know, the school committee should at least take a look at it. I think it's time to start discussing it. But that's my observation from looking at your budget. You hit the number, that's great. That's what we want from our end, but I think there's big overarching discussions that are going to benefit certainly Ron and you and the school, the schools and the teachers and frankly, the kids, the children. So I think that's something that hopefully the committee will take a look at, because I, this is the same stuff we keep talking about. This is the programming we'd like to do, but we're cutting back. Then parents are paying for the materials and, you know, all the school supplies. And at some point, it's just impacting the children, and I think that's something that, you know, I look at, and I'm like, we have to have a frank discussion about it. Put it on the table with all these other issues that we have. So that's my observation.
Sure. I, just a couple of things to help me understand a little, some of these numbers. So looking, looking at the comparative fiscal 18, we have the deficit of $450,000. And then the original project, projected before you guys sharpened your pencils was 745. But, so the 4, but the 441 is not in those numbers?
It is.
So how, that's where I got lost. It's, how is that reflected in the 441?
So the 441, that was an operational deficit for FY18, because it's operational, it's recurring cost.
Correct.
So that 745 that you see is an FY19 deficit as of February 3rd reflects the recurring cost of 441, plus any additions that would be increases, you know, contractual increases from year to year, right? So it's not, that 441 wasn't that there was a single purchase or big one-time purchases, right?
No, I understand, but if you look through the costs and the resources of just the fiscal 19, that came to the deficit of 745. So you're not really paying off the 441 in that.
We do when we get to, we have to sharpen the pencils to do that, yes. Right?
Okay.
Yeah. In February, the February 3rd workshop, the first that you see?
Yeah.
Didn't close that budget gap at all. It helped me identify it, identified where that is and what that looks like, but it wasn't until our March work. So from February to March, we identified how to close that gap.
And earlier, you, we were talking about you're coming to the end of the five, the prior five-year plan?
Correct.
So just out of curiosity, that includes budget projections as well, or is it strictly operational planning?
It's operational planning that should drive the budget process. And so, you know, to Mr. Dennehy's point, it should help us identify what our priorities are, and we want to invest in those priorities.
Right. Okay. Maybe I'll have to find the other questions.
Really, just a comment, Ron. This is, you know, it's always been a good document to follow. You know, John McCarthy did a fantastic job, but you've kind of laid it out. It's very easy to follow, and I appreciate it. To John's point, you're, you know, and I really don't have anything else to add, it's, you know, your hands are tied. You're only allowed to 2.5%. And like John said, the wheels, you know, train comes off the track every four or five years. Tony and I have talked about it. So it's a challenge, and I appreciate what you're doing.
Thank you.
That's really all. Thanks.
Yeah, just a couple of questions. On this sheet here, when you, you know, so the first $340,000, so that's a traditional, right? Where 10 people retire, you hire 10 other people, make it 50, and that made up that group.
Correct.
The second group, what, I don't quite understand, is this layoff, is this people, positions that are being eliminated?
So not necessarily, but there are positions that are either one-year positions for, so for example, again, that graduating class of 2022, there are temporary positions tied to that class because it's so large. There are other situations in our elementary schools that are similar. When you take a look at the budget, there are some elementary schools that are going from 17 sections to 16 sections simply because enrollment has decreased. And in some of those places, there are one-year positions, right? So there are things like that that reflect that dollar amount. In addition, that also reflects staffing that have been allocated to student services that are no longer required due to their IEP changing, program changing, they move from one building to the other, increases your graduation, and the program is different, the services are different. So it's a combination of sections as well as student services.
So there's been, there's no layoffs through that section? And then section C for the $314,000, that's what you have to figure out, and that may incur cutting programs, cutting.
That's correct.
Positions, and that, that's what you're kind of waiting to see what?
We're going to try our best to avoid that, absolutely.
On that note, what's the status of the contract with teachers? Is that?
In negotiations.
So is that for, is this year been, has 19 been established yet? Or no, that's the year that's?
That's correct.
Okay.
FY18 is the final year of that contract. It's the final year of all six of our associations and unions' contracts.
Okay. And that's in works right now, and hopefully I can negotiate with you or something. Great. The other thing that Karen kind of touched on, and Paul, maybe you can explain, so clearly at the end of the year, you can't have a deficit of $441,000. It's going to be zero at the end. So is that, is that impacted by prepayments that you couldn't make in previous years? How did that?
Basically, it is prepayments that you didn't make, right? Circuit breaker that you have, that was 17, that we're using in 18, and we had a little bit left over from 16, but we used that in 17, but I didn't use all of 17 in 18. I'm not going to be, I've been kind of saving a little bit along the way as we go. But one of the main reasons why we had a deficit was we didn't take those three elementary positions that we thought about back in, you know, the beginning of the budget season last year. We looked at those. We didn't do it.
What do you mean, you didn't take them? You didn't reduce them?
We could, yeah, we didn't reduce. We waited. Unfortunately, Ron had that. At the big class at grade eight at the middle school, so we added some more personnel there that was on the table before we ended up doing that. We had some paraprofessionals that we were going to reduce. We ended up putting them in our full-day kindergarten. So we did have a plan to do that, but we had reserves to not do that.
So, yeah, so that's, I mean, obviously, you're juggling people, but, but there's reserves that accumulated over probably since John said the last override was in '11 in different buckets that you were able to get through last year.
This year.
This year, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
And you're not going to be able to start with any sort of something in the kitty in terms of boxes of paper or something to start fresh in the upcoming years, is that correct?
That hopefully is not going to be correct. I'm hopefully going to have something. But right now, it looks like we're probably not going to have a whole heck of a lot to start this off, to offset some of that 314. C.
Oh, right. Right, right. And it's, it's a, as Sean mentioned, it's a tough, a tough formula because the math just doesn't work. You know, the levy goes up this much, payroll goes up this much, and eventually it catches up with you. So it's, it's very difficult, very difficult task as the years go on and get kind of at the end of that, that cycle. But, but you got a, you got a plan in place, which I appreciate. It doesn't show cuts in services at this point, and hopefully we get a few breaks along the way and don't have to act on that 314.
Any other questions? Did you have a question?
No, Tony covered the, one second.
Well, everyone's pretty much covered all the questions that I had on my, my list as well, and can't thank you enough for putting this together.
Actually, since we're starting with the budget, what's going to happen with the changing of the timing? Is that, is the school committee going to vote on that to send the elementary earlier and the middle school later? Right now, the elementary, the middle school goes at seven, and elementary goes at eight, 8:30 or something like this, or 8:45, and then the high school shows up at 8:10, and like, what's, what's happening on that?
We're exploring that with some community members as well that are invested in this work. It's not something that we're pursuing for next year for a couple of reasons. While it's important to make sure that we're thoughtful about students getting enough sleep and developmentally appropriate times to start school, there are lots of things that are also attached to the time that school starts and the time that school ends. I think the best example that you have of that is what Boston did. You know, if you read the news around Boston's potential change in those times, they took a look at the data. The scientific data that's out there shows it's clearly helpful to have, you know, an elementary, middle, high school start times, right, for all those reasons that they outline. But they jumped right into it and didn't take the time to identify all of the potential ripples that that causes. And their community was affected by it and really pushed back hard. They took the whole thing off the table, and it stopped their ability to do that longer term. So we're taking a hard look at it, we're identifying the research, but we're also taking some time to identify the groups that would be impacted and what that would look like. So just as an example, at our last meeting, where we had our community members that are involved in this as well, I brought in our Metco director. We have students on a Metco bus for sometimes well over an hour. So we want to be thoughtful about all of the constituents and all of the families that that are part of the city of public schools before we jump to do anything. It's a good idea. The structure's a good idea. We just have to be thoughtful about what the ramifications are.
Yep. Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Thank you for having us.
Great budget. And we already voted and approved it last week, so we need you to come in and.
You didn't have to show up, see?
We appreciate it.
It certainly could be done tonight, so thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Ron. Thank you, Paul.
Great night. I'm just going to take an item out of order. A couple of the waterways, don't mind for a moment. We've got a quick discussion. I don't, I'm not sure that we have a vote that we need to vote on this because they already have done it previously. Yeah, no, I don't know that I'm asking you, so I can't.
You voted in December to.
Right, so one sec, let's bring Brad up. Yeah, so I just want to bring Brad up, just to go over the proposed zoning of an amendment extension to the business overlay district. I think we had a couple of questions with regards to it. And Larry reminded me that he was here earlier, you know, coming before, he came to Lawrence to talk about this before he went to the planning board. So I just didn't know if the board had any additional questions with regards to this as it sits on the board.
I do. Just, because I think I missed the meeting that you actually explained it back in January. So Brad, the parcel in particular is the old medical building on the corner of Driftway and New Driftway and the roundabout. What's it zoned as? Is it just residential? Is that what the issue is?
It's currently zoned as residential. I do have a permit to do the medical use. It's there now and that use only, aside from the allowed residential uses.
Gotcha. So like a variance or some, is that what it asks? Okay. And I ask that because I was looking at it going, are there any other areas that were, shall we say, missed to deal with? Because obviously, what's going to happen here is whoever buys it, because it's not selling, is going to then probably look for mixed, mixed use, I presume, with the parking. And then, you know, obviously, that means they're going to be tying the town sewer, which again, I recognize makes sense. This is the business district. There's no sense having it end right at your backyard. And then across the street, you got the medical building, the new medical building, the hatch building. So it makes sense to me. But I was just trying to figure out why it was missed or something like this. Was it due to a mapping issue or?
I don't know why it was.
Historically?
Honestly overlooked. And if you look at the map that I provided you folks tonight, and it was part of the original presentation in December, you can see that this parcel is completely surrounded by the existing business district and the existing village business overlay district. So as to why this was left out, I don't know. Again, the board was approached late in fall, early winter by the property owner to reason on this property. And the board felt that it made sense to kind of harmonize the business district to include this kind of hole in the doughnut or the gap, if you will. Again, the parcel has been in use for business, for business purposes for nearly 30 years. So again, it's just kind of acknowledging the existing condition. And you are right, it would allow for kind of new and different uses. But I think that's what the board would like to see and it's consistent with the planning for the area.
Yeah. No, I, I have no, no problems with it. I'm just curious about the history of it. I just know going forward, I think, because in the past, we've done at least one parcel on the Driftway, which was the old auto parts store that we ended up putting in the overlay district. Because I think, was it in the business district or was it, I can't recall. We put it special. I'm just looking at it saying, I think, Brad, now that you're here going forward with the planning department and, and looking at this, we should make sure that we're looking at the total area going forward and not looking more or less towards spot zoning, which in a sense, we're looking at a spot, we're going to zone it. We did this before with the other parcel that was on Driftway. And I think with your leadership looking at it, it'd behoove us to make sure that we're consistent saying we're going to do this area as opposed to, you know, looking specifically at areas like this area. This makes sense. I'm just saying.
This, you know, this would, you know, thankfully not be spot zoning because that's where you're zoning something that would make it inconsistent with the surrounding area. Hopefully, we're doing the opposite here, making it consistent with the surrounding area. But what the EDC and the planning board have been working on and what we're, you know, trying to work with constituent groups, whether it be stakeholders or business owners or both, is getting that kind of buy-in and that process to look at this area more holistically.
Good.
And that would be something we'd be looking at hopefully for next town meeting or a future town meeting that, that's Driftway and kind of this.
Good.
John, I thought, in talking to Billy Armberger, I thought he was involved in, in having that zoned or his father was. I remember talking about this parcel. It's, if you ask anyone around town, they'd just assume it was part of the business district and it's just a, it's a gap. So I think it did happen and it was, you know, non-conforming, as Brad said. It's medical use only. I just remember Billy telling me, I think he was involved with, or his dad was.
And the planning board was unanimous in supporting?
They were, yes. Yeah, this was, so there was a public hearing on February 22nd. It was continued to the next meeting on March 8th or 9th, and they were voting in here.
Any issues from surrounding the butters?
None on this particular site. I mean, there has been, you know, folks interested in what's going on in Green Bush in general. But again, that's why we're looking at, hold a public meeting sometime in April or May to talk about everything that's happened, is happening, well, you know, is planned for the future. But again, this, once we talk about the specific site, there were no issues.
And who brought it before the board?
It's a gentleman by the name of Fran Dillon. I don't know if he's a representative of the current owner or someone. I think he's kind of a bridge between the current owner and someone that's interested in the site.
I mean, it makes sense because it's, no, they can't sell it, as is. And so it's, it, it is surrounded by the business district. It makes perfect sense to put it in it. So it becomes more, more viable.
It's the dark green area, right?
It is, yeah.
What's the lighter green? I know there's water in there.
That's another zoning district, the Salt Marsh and Conservation. It's another overlay district that was just captured on this map.
So is it going to be this whole area? Is there going to be this one little gap?
Just the dark green, just the dark green.
So there's going to be this little light green area?
That's existing now. The light green and the red are all existing. The dark green shows the proposed parcel that would be changed to business.
So to Tony's point then, I'm not sure if it's representative. Is that the river shed, the light green? Or is that just actually the, the?
I think the light green is the river shed parking lot. Or it might actually be the channel itself. It's hard to tell without the overlay, I apologize.
That came up in advisory as well, so I think we just should be prepared to know exactly.
Yeah, the dark green here is the medical building and the parking lot for the medical building.
And that's what I'm saying, like, you know, if, if, now we've got the river shed parcel and like now it's another gap or missing piece. And I'm like, it should be all done, then the whole thing should be all.
Yeah, the buildings itself or the river shed are definitely within the business overlay district. So again, I don't know if that's the parking lot or that, the channel, but I can find out.
Am I still supposed to call you?
No.
Did you have another question?
No, I'm on that same stupid question. So my question is, should we do the whole area as opposed to just make a little bit more red and have a little bit more green area that should be in the business overlay district as well?
No, I think this is the only developable site. Again, I.
If it's the parking lot, I would say it's not. At some point in time, someone's going to want to.
In front of the river shed?
Well, the ice, ice house and the pizza thing, if that's that parking lot.
I can't see with.
Someone on that land, they could knock down a building with a restaurant, has more, or something.
Push it up front.
Yeah, I can look at that, I don't look for.
So, you know, it looks like we've got a spot that there's generally portion of. If at all should be zoned or developed.
Do you want that clarified before we vote on it?
I don't know, what do you guys, what do you guys think? Because I think what will happen is someone else will come back here in a couple of years and say, well, can we now do this one other little spot? Because they want to sell the property that, you know, the river shed.
Brad, this map is just a poor example of that property. It's not the property at all. If you think about it, when you go, come out of the rotary and you're going down Driftway, there's 200, 300 feet of frontage on, on the Driftway. And this little green section that we're referring to, that's.
That's just the medical building and the parking lot. Is this, what's represented are.
Not this map. No way. Nope. No, the parking lot's huge. You get, the parking lot goes down here. And I'm not, you know, you know the parcel, we all know the parcel. This map's terrible. The parking lot goes down here. This is the rotary right there. Parking lot goes down there.
The little green then?
Yeah, no, that's not it. Little green thing is not. The, the little dark green map, the blob is not the medical building. If the map is right.
This is our zoning map.
That's, that's not accurate.
The red on the other side is the hatch building.
Yes.
Yeah, because this is Driftway right here, Sean.
This is Driftway here, isn't it?
Well, you know what?
All right, I'm sorry.
Sean, to your point.
That's 3A.
This is 3A.
Yeah, that little.
Okay.
To your point though.
I can't read this.
That's the rotary. This is the rotary here.
But to your point, Sean, it has the original hatch building and barn. It doesn't have the actual.
All right, okay, all right.
Updated hatch medical building.
It's a crazy map.
They have the three PowerPoint slides that I sent you. This was actually the easiest to read one. Yeah, ignoring the map itself with all the overlays is almost unreadable, so this was intended.
Does this have to pass by simple majority or?
Two-thirds.
It is two-thirds.
Two-thirds.
Okay. You better have the answers.
I mean, I, I think that property should be zoned properly. But I think if we're going to do it right, we find that other little piece that's missing.
Yeah, and the Salt Marsh Thailand's conservation area is very prohibited. And typically, it's on marshland or other areas that we don't want to see, aside from like a water-dependent accessory structure. So again, it's not typically on a parking lot that you'd see that, that's not in the overlay. But I can double check as to where that is exactly on the map.
I think that's what it is, is the water, the watershed area.
Yeah.
Clarify that.
No, Ms. Ansot, thank you.
So the question before the board is, do you want to vote to support the article? Or do you want to wait until town meeting floor until Brad can answer another, those questions?
So let me ask you this. If we find out that yes, indeed, the green area, the light green area is actually the parking lot, are we looking to make a motion to include it all? Is that what you're thinking? Or are we just, I mean, as it stands right now, I'm happy to support it. I'm just saying, I hate to do piecemeal. That's really what I don't like. I want it done, to get it done. And I don't want the owner of that property in the future to come back and say, okay, I want this portion. Because my, the one next to me, the one behind me, the one across from me is all business. I'm like, get it all done in one fell swoop. But I don't want to delay it either.
Unfortunately, probably too late to.
To do anything, yeah.
I support this one more. I think it's kind of, I'm surprised no one playing mentioned that.
Yeah, yeah, not having the map in front of me, but that parking lot runs right up to that water body. So again, if this is the parcel boundary, I would imagine it's the, the kind of bank of that stream.
All right, so do I have a motion to approve Article 17 to support Article 17 as written?
Move to support Article 17 as written.
Second.
Oop, by Mr. Dennehy, second by Mr. Harris. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Brad, you're coming back in. We appreciate it.
What'd you do?
I get back to, I get back to that. The agenda, I had it.
All right. So next, Waterways? So this is just to review and discuss the detail for the fire boat?
Yes. The harbor master.
Yes. Thank you. That's why you're here, clarify about that.
Yes.
So we appreciate you coming in and I, you know, I don't think we had heard from the Waterways Commission either, so we were interested in getting feedback from not only your board, but also, you know, Stephen, I knew, Chief Murphy mentioned it in your operational budget period review. But as a capital item, I think there were, there were some questions that the board had before we wanted to move on it.
So tonight, we had a Waterways meeting, a special Waterways meeting. We met at the NOAA building at 5:30. I presented along with Chief Murphy a PowerPoint presentation to the Waterways to kind of go over our thoughts and where, how we came up with what we came up with and kind of clarify any questions that Waterways may have had. There was some canceled meeting in February and I was, you know, unavailable. I was on vacation in March. So there were some other questions that they had. We were able to answer their questions. Meeting went very well. We took a vote this evening and what was eight to one in favor of the boat. If you have any questions, if we could do the PowerPoint presentation, it will only take a few minutes. Or if you have any questions about the boat, we can kind of go over it.
And now Fran, if you want to elaborate as well, or anything additional you want to add?
Chief Murphy and Harbor Master, they did a terrific job on the presentation tonight. As far as we see, there was some great discussion and we had a bunch of stakeholders, a lot of fishermen. So it's a productive meeting and they laid a lot of our fears and answered a lot of our questions. And we did vote in a yard for it. So what's that, Brian?
I also have letters from all the marina owners in the town and some fishermen as well in support of the vote.
A little bit after, anybody have questions?
Just give us a quick overview. It's a 400 and.
It's a $430,000 purchase. When I first got here, I reached out to Chief Murphy. We kind of talked about, because there was a fire pump on the boat, we kind of talked about, you know, what our mission was. And, you know, we had some discussions. Then after that, I was kind of thinking, you know, looking at the boat and it was aging and where we were going to go with it. So I reached out, I was looking around the harbor and I reached out to some of the commercial fishermen, the lobstermen, find out what their needs were as well. And speaking to them, they were, part of their fears were, you know, the Coast Guard is shrinking. You know, they're not here as much as they used to be. And what happens in the wintertime? And, you know, our abilities, and in the past, we haven't had boats in the water. And that's one of the reasons we had a boat in the water. So I spoke to them a little bit more and I asked what they, you know, use, you know, what types of boat they're using and, you know, if, if I could come up with a boat like that, would, would that make sense? I also, Plymouth Harbor Master has a boat very similar. Chief Murphy and I went down and actually looked at the boat, went through it and went for a sea trial on the boat. When we did that, Chief Murphy was sold on the boat. So I didn't kind of just pull this out of the air. I've been looking at this since probably day one. And I've been speaking to a lot of, a lot of people. George Mason, now the DBW, the town mechanic, what to power with, fishermen, what types of boat, what to get on the boats, you know, how to equip it.
And then, can you describe the boat and what it does?
It's a lobster boat. It's basically, you know, if you look at some of the lobster boats out in the harbor, I actually have a picture of it if you'd like.
Want to hit in the highlights, Stephen?
Yes. To what you have today?
So just to generalize what we had for our presentation. The boat is very similar to the lobster boat type boats, which actually Plymouth had one, was the exact same boat we went down there and looked at that after the recommendations from the lobster. So looking at the cost, the cost is $430,000 upfront. Here, we usually compare it to a 20-foot parker, which is sort of a recreational, commercial application. That boat was $203,000 with a pump on it. After 15 years, the Calvin Beale, this boat is a commercial boat. Overall cost is just under $500,000. The gas boat, after 15 years, is about $561,000. And it has to be replaced. It's a 15-year lifespan on that boat. It's more of a recreational boat in a commercial application. Engines have to be changed every five or six years on the gas boats. A lot more maintenance costs, a lot more fuel. So the efficiency of the fuel, the efficiency of the maintenance, the longevity is a big, big thing built along, you know, to last, just like these lobster boats are. So it also is a 25-foot boat that get out there. Now we're expanding our range for the fishermen and the wind cannons to be year-round boat. It's not a seasonal boat. But now, when nobody's around, in the winter time, they're off to fishing, trying to make a living. They're on two, three, four foot seas. You now have something to get out there and get them and help them. As anything, whether it's a ferry, a fishing boat, we have limitations on what we can do with our 25-foot boats. Women holding up in one, two or three foot shop, women have to wait for a helicopter. Women hold up in one, two or three foot shop, women have to wait for a helicopter. This gives us the ability to expand our capabilities in conjunction and collaboration with the auto mast and its mission. It's also a big differences, the working platform of this boat is about 250 square feet, on the, on the parkers, about 65 square feet, you know, the same boat we have is about 25 square feet. So a big, big platform, we have multiple people in the water, dive operations, and also firefighting, the capabilities, the big diesel engine, we can run a pump at 2,000 gallons a minute, something that's got you going to put a fire out quickly, it's the only way of going to keep something from going into a big, basically a marine conformation. So we have heavy water power, the ability to have foam, any gas boat, no matter what you have, I don't care, I don't make it, it's the gas application, you might get four or five hundred gallons a minute, max. So both capability, basically, maybe if the small boat fires, you might go over to bay, but this is something that's going to be there, it's going to be the most impact. If you look at videos of that, most of the water, fires in the water, these marinas, most of the actual effective firefighting is done from the water. Extremely dangerous, when fire lasts and fuel burns, it's black smoke. We had James Landy Fire in 1999, October 11th, $6 million, the single highest value fire we've had in history, it's a marine fire. Tucker Patterson's boat in 2013, it was January 31st.
If it was August, it would have been a disaster.
Yeah, it would have went right into the end of Cole Park, the rain, probably took about 25 or 30 boats, it was a windy day, and then they burned their lines off, and they spread.
And they were just spread out throughout the mooring fields.
So it could have been a catastrophe with that example. Masha led a fire last year, Dr. Leach, and they had a single boat, five, four fishermen down there. Fortunately, it was near the dock, they were actually getting pretty good access from the dock from the shore. First thing they did, they have a $500,000 safe boat, that's a good patrol boat, but it's not a fire boat, is they call it a plume boat. They spent $500,000, $520,000 on this boat, and they called it a plume boat. Fortunately, they were able to get it out from the shore, it was close.
And the wind was blowing in the right direction.
Yeah, it really worked out for them, but it could have been a catastrophe, but the first thing they did is call it a plume boat, which is the same boat we're trying to get. So the diesel engine gives you capacity of 2,000 gallons a minute, no matter what gas engine you have, you're maybe four or five hundred gallons a minute with a foam capability, you may be able to try to hold it up there. This thing has a chance to put out a decent fire quickly, and that's the goal of this whole thing, is to get something high impact, to minimize the damage and the experience of a marine fire.
Also, dewatering capability of 2,000 gallons a minute, because we can change the valves, throw a line into a boat that's sinking, and dewater at the same rate.
Well, all those are the main, the main thing. Plymouth bought the same boat, not field, they were away with all of these safe boats, which way outboard on, long-term maintenance is a lot of money, long-term fuel is a lot of money, they don't have any ability to fight fire. So I think the collaboration of the fire department and the Harbor Master, to try to make use, we're also going to take up one slip, two slips, so there's some standings there as well. It's just that we took all the information from the fishermen. Stephen, he's got a lot of information, he's got. Stephen actually has a safe boat, the one we have down there.
Identical.
Down there, he pointed out some limitations to me, when I thought that was somebody boat, we gave credit, it's free.
Two people in the cockpit, you can't move, so you can't perform CPR, you can't do triage, there's just no room.
So just having that work, a very limited ability for the diesel engines, run a decent real fire pump.
E-Lo operations.
So after the price, after 15 years, the price is about $197,000 with a over time pose. The 28 parker is $561,000, they have to buy a new one. Over 30 years, the cost estimates are $565,000 total, with the boat we're trying to purchase, over $1 million with the other, they have to replace. So long-term, between the maintenance, fuel savings, and the efficiency that it has, fire outplays, it's twice as much upfront, so over time, over 15 years, you're already ahead of the game. This is a 30- or 40-year boat, this thing is made for commercial application, we're around, and mostly those safe boats, safe by 300,000 purchased, or over $100,000, $750,000 same block of fire. They get some grants now, they can live right next to the power plant now. So we're sort of in between outside the realm of the power plant down in Plymouth, and outside the realm of Boston, even though we have tug of vodges, ferry boats, commercial boats, we're still going to put it for a grant, it's possible, not probable, so we're still going to put it for a grant and see what happens with that. But we feel $430,000 is going to get value, value and protection, public safety, although we haven't had it a long time, unfortunately, some of these fires, we've had about five or six different fires that happened this year. Masha had one, obviously, Turner had one, Cruz had two, also it's.
So what's the build time? I heard two years?
The, it's not a build, it's not a build time.
Okay, order.
It's an order. These boats are pretty popular, right? You know, just boats in general are pretty popular, because the economy is pretty strong. Right now, we've got Unit 3 back, it had some damage, so we, it'll be back probably at the end of the month, it'll be back in service, and we'll continue to operate Unit 3, and just keep it together until this is complete, we're hoping.
So what's Unit 3? Just tell me.
Unit 3 is a 25-foot parker.
No, I just mean like, as far as all the boats you have down there, is it your main boat, is it a fire boat, is it the extra assisted harbor master?
No, it's a, it's kind of a combination, it's the, our year-round boat and the fire boat.
Okay.
Doesn't really have much firefighting capability, so hopefully we can do what that happened about there.
There's also a possibility that someone pushes out a build on their boat, and we would potentially move into that slot. We, again, it would still have to go out to bid, you still have to follow all of, you know.
And you're looking for a 34 quarter or not? 36?
It was 34, there, someone told us we should get a 42, but.
Nancy, how are we paying for this? Is this capital?
Right now, right now, it'd have to be borrowing, but given the amount of time that they have, they would have an opportunity, when they have retained earnings certified, to pay down some of that with retained earnings, or they get a grant. They also, their other capital projects, Harbor Master's other capital project, which is additional pilings, may qualify for a Seaport Economic Advisory Council grant, and if that happens, that's $140,000 that was being funded from retained earnings.
The, the other thing is, right now, our de-ices, we have the coldest spell in 100 years, I guess. So the de-icing worked over at the Maritime Center. The pilings are hopefully going to start being pounded in October 16th, and we plan on leaving the marina in place, as we just moved her across the way. And without taking out of, out of the water, that was about a $50,000 a year savings.
Which is a guess, and that annual has a huge cost for this, so that's most of it.
I'm not just trying to spend money.
Sean?
If you're ready to turn it over to us, I'll start this, I'll say?
Absolutely.
All right, well, it's like Murph said, this is like no boat we've had before, it's a commercial boat, it's a solid glass boat, auto foam cord boat, I don't know how much you retain, you know, outboard motors have a life expectancy of 5, 10 years, you know, this equipped the way they described it in the meeting, drivetrain, as well as a boat is a 30-year boat, like he said. I was thinking today, back in the early 80s, maybe the mid 80s, I forget exactly when it was, the Coast Guard had three boats in situ, on first, three, 44, 41, and then they got this inflatable. So slowly, they, they left, or they didn't see the need, or cutbacks, what have you. So now we have Coast Guard that's there in the summertime, you know, it doesn't say, doesn't do a lot for the fishermen, and like these guys were saying, there were at least a handful of fishermen there tonight, and I had to leave early, so I didn't know what they had to say, I was really interested in what their thoughts were. But that's when some will argue, that you need, you know, the presence of a boat like this, more so than the summertime. And I was talking to John earlier today, and, you know, yeah, it's got the fire capabilities, hopefully we never have to use, but, you know, how often do we hear of people getting hurt, you know, cutting props, or, you know, drowning and things like this? You know, John and his dive team, dive team could be, you know, six guys could fit on this boat on the deck easily, get dressed and jump in the water, where they can't do that in any boat that Stephen's ever had, or we've ever had. So it's a big investment, but if it's not a Beatles Island design, it's, it's a lobster style boat, there are many others that, you know, they could probably look into for the same amount of money, but it's not like anything we've ever had before. So it's, you know, be a big investment for a long time, there were a lot of concerns about, you know, the size of it, is it too big, is it maneuverable around mooring fields and so forth, who would be, you know, authorized to use it, how would these two, you know, the fire department and Harbor Masters collaborate? And I think they've got the answers, you know, they've talked about it earlier, it could work out very well, as well as police down, going down the spit, you know, if there was, God forbid, something that they had to, you know, bring aboard half a dozen people, 10 people, this boat will, will take it, and it will move through rough water. So it's a big investment, but he's absolutely right, that in the long term, it's no more expensive than a smaller boat with, without board motors.
We had a, a couple of years ago, off the Glades, it was, I believe, the year or two years before I got here, there was a boat sank off the Glades, and 16 people went in the water. And Mike Beers was able to pull two of them out, and additional boats showed up and got the rest of the people out of the water. But this is, you know, our limitations, it's just not.
Fortunately, it was a calm day, with plenty of boats up there, but if that happened on a choppy day, nobody's up there.
What about the lobstermen that went in the harbor? I mean, you didn't have a boat in the water.
That was prior to me getting.
That was before you, but, you know, I've won.
Oh, me getting in the.
Well, out in the other harbor, and you guys just, nothing you could do. And if this boat was in the water, and if someone wasn't there, this person would have drowned.
One of the questions was, where do we keep it in, in the wintertime? It would be kept at Cole Parkway. If weather started to move in, we'd go to the Maritime Center, if it was heavy weather, we'd haul it out in the straps, make an arrangement with Brian over at Boat Works. And once the storm passed, we'd just put it back in the water.
Karen, did you have any questions?
No, I'm, thank you to the Waterways for meeting tonight to opine on that before town meetings, that was important, and I know all the other committees have approved this along the, on the process, so thanks for coming back in.
I said, one more, what did the one person that voted against it always have a rational point?
He was thinking more maneuverability, and going between moors, and this is not the boat that's going to control between moors. It's going to be the boat, you know, fire capability, platform capability, but basically, lodging boat has always been outside the harbor. This is going to give you capability from the mountain river, you know, obviously you're going to fight fire capability, and they're going to have, this is not a control boat, midnight, go with you, they have other posts for that. So he was like, back and forth, he just said, you know, in the end, he said no, just because he thought maneuverability would be a challenge. We talked as about, if we're on this, it's a single diesel, if you want to put a turn cluster on, hope people, you could, you could add that to it.
It's a treater.
Treats maneuverability. Especially during the fire in between these, between the small boats, but. Said, we have these, we go in and out of these mooring and boats, and lobster pots all the time, and it's an argument we used to, but we had a boat, six, five fishermen speak that, you know, very little maintenance, great boat, and they, they expect to have some protection in the off-season, and they know this has the capabilities to do that right now, and right now, we're going to have to provide protection in the harbor, unfortunately so. This is going to help us with a lot of things. The best money spent, the best value, the best investment we can make in the long term for all things.
John, did you have anything further?
No, health and safety, you know, it's, it's going to be needed for the harbor, for the boats, but more importantly, for the fishermen, so I'm all for it, I got my vote.
I don't, did we vote on it? I don't, can't remember if we pulled it out, and we just wanted additional information.
You voted to support the capital plan, as it was.
Okay, we need some additional information on this. Yeah, so I think you're all set with regards to our vote with that, so if there are no more questions, just thank you, I think we just really needed to get some more detail on the public, and the need for it, and the harbor, and the safety, and that was articulated as, as much as we could have by the time we approved it, so we just wanted to get that information out there for.
Going forward, the communication should be better between myself, and the committee itself, and we did have a January 3, we may have, but we had one of our biggest storms ever, January 4, so.
Yeah, we've had a few excuses, it's okay. Few distractions, not excuses.
That's why we get more information, but, but yeah, going forward, we'll make sure that there's very good communication between all, everyone involved, and this does go forward.
No worries, great, thanks for coming in.
If you'd like to have these letters to support, if you want them for the file, or just to review?
Sure, yeah, we'll take them, can help. Give them to Lorraine, Stephen, because then we can use them, whoever's covering the capital plan, be helpful, so thank you.
We'll do a PowerPoint presentation if needed in town meetings, we'll have it.
Let's hope we don't need it.
But, but it's there in case.
All right, awesome.
All right?
Great.
Thank you very much.
Fran, thank you.
Want that back, Steve?
You want your votes back? You got it?
I'm good, thanks Karen.
Yep.
All right, next on the agenda is discussion and vote regarding joining into a joint litigation, legal litigation. So Jim, I know you and me, Peter?
Correct, yes, thank you.
Thank you, if you wouldn't mind coming forward, just for the record, identifying yourself, and Jim, I didn't know if you wanted to tee it up first for the board, and then people on Peter take it away.
Sure, you have a copy of the email that Peter sent me, he contacted Antonella, who then gave it to me. I talked to Peter, I had him come in.
Oh, thank you, Greg.
And this is similar to a, thanks, similar to a suit that the town of Norwell took part in on MTBE, or MBTE, whatever it is, which was an additive in gasoline that was polluting the water supplies, and the town participated in that lawsuit, ended up getting somewhere around the neighborhood of $7,500,000 out of the lawsuit, really at no effort to the town. So, given the town's position on the opioid epidemic, given the fact that we've been one of the leading communities on fighting the opioid epidemic, to me, I thought it's something we should definitely look at, however, only the selectmen have the ability to actually hire counsel. So I wanted to bring Peter in to give me an opportunity to meet with you, I know, Ma, you and I spoke to our town council, and got some of their reservations, I guess I'd say they're more processed than, than anything else. But Peter is here to explain what this is, and then the board can decide whether or not they want to join this, this lawsuit.
Sure, so I'll tell you a little bit, bit about who we are and what we're doing, and certainly want to, want to see what those questions are, what some of your thoughts are. But my name is Pete Marigan, and I am from a law firm in Boston called Sweeney Marigan Law. We are working along with two other law firms, one is Rodman, Rodman Saman, who represented about 90 Massachusetts communities in connection with this MTBE, which is a water contamination litigation, and they recovered approximately $100 million for about 90 communities, along with KP Law, who is helping us primarily facilitate some of our municipal issues between the litigation on the national front. We are three local firms, working along with six other national law firms to form a consortium of nine firms, representing Massachusetts cities and towns, we're filing suits against the manufacturers and distributors of opioids. We are seeking primarily two buckets of damages on behalf of the municipalities that we represent. We're seeking backward-looking damages, which are to recover hard economic costs that have been incurred by the local municipality for things such as EMS, Narcan, any officer-related costs. And what we've found is these hard costs are very different from community to community. Some communities have opioid task force, some communities have increased police officers in response to actually hired officers, we've had some communities who have had self-insured workers' comp claims that have ended up needing to pay as a result of an employee being injured, and then becoming addicted to opioids. We've had some communities who have had to use, excuse me, town-owned property to provide treatment services, so there's a property damage, and we have urban blight and rural blight experts who, who can facilitate some of those hard economic costs. But we're, one thing we've also found, and we're finding, is that even when people and communities have documented these damages, they're often very under-reported. And many communities have a hard time identifying exactly what is related and what isn't. The second pool of damages is that, is the sort of bucket of damages that we think will be the bigger pot of damages, and that's a forward-looking damage. It's an abatement model, it's to recover for the public nuisance this has caused to the municipalities. Within that scope, there are three areas that we're advocating for, where communities need to be funded in order to fuel future recovery. This is a crisis, it's an epidemic, so part of this litigation, the goal, is to provide funding to allow the municipalities the tools to go beyond this, this crisis. The three areas that we're advocating for, and again, I say advocating, because once any recovery is achieved, those dollars go into the municipality coffers, and it's for the municipality to decide how to spend those dollars. But the three areas where we're advocating for are officer training and safety, because they're the ones on the front lines fighting this battle, for treatment and prevention services. Again, some communities, we've talked to some municipalities, say that they have more treatment, and everybody from every town nearby is coming there for treatment, they don't need more treatment, other communities need it. So it varies, but that's one of the areas. And third is for education, and we foresee, and would like to see the money go to teaching young children at an early age the dangers of opioids and prescription drugs, and that, simply because they're, they're such commonplace in our culture, doesn't mean it's less dangerous than a street drug. So those are sort of the general broad scope of the damages. One thing that's different from, say, tobacco litigation, which has been compared to this litigation in many ways, is that was primarily prosecuted on the AG level, on behalf of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts or other states. As a result, when the funding came back, it came back in, at the state level, and it came to the legislature, and while some of the money did trickle down, it often wasn't felt on the municipal level, the way many in local municipalities would have, would have hoped. And so that's one of the advantages we see with this, this model of litigation. These are individual lawsuits, they're not, it's, this is not a class action, that's something that's frequently reported in the media, and that is not the case. A class action lawsuit is where. A class action lawsuit is where you have the same defendant's conduct causing the same injuries to a large group of people. And those are often the circumstances where you see some big settlement and lawyers' fees of X amount and then every individual participant gets a very marginal or fractional amount. This would be referred to as a mass tort litigation, which is a circumstance where the defendant's conduct is the same in causing the harm, but the harm caused to all the individuals are very different. So the way that these litigations sort of evolve and get managed is we file, we would file an individual lawsuit on behalf of the town of Situate here in federal court in Massachusetts. The cases would then be transferred to the northern, northern district of Ohio in front of a judge named Daniel Pollster, who has been charged with the duty to oversee what's called a multi-district litigation, or a MDL, as you often hear lawyers like me refer to it as. And from there, the judge will oversee issues such as discovery and, and ultimately select a few representative cases for trial to help facilitate ultimately a global settlement or to decide that these cases can't be resolved globally and then remand them back to local courts for trial. Within the multi-district litigation, there is a hierarchy of leadership counsel on behalf of both the plaintiffs and the defendants. Without getting into all the specifics of it, I'll share that our consortium holds the majority of, of leadership positions in the national litigation, including lead counsel, co-lead counsel, co-executive liaison counsel, which is sort of a, a second level leadership position, and multiple people within the executive steering committee. There were, and these numbers are constantly changing, so they're always out of date by the time I say them, but there was about four hundred and twenty-five cases filed in the MDL as of probably five or six days ago. And our, our consortium of firms had filed two hundred of them. So we are the leadership, both in the actual litigation in terms of representing a, a large number. And we think that will ultimately serve our clients well when it does come time to, to resolve the cases. We represent many municipalities in Massachusetts. We're approaching approximately seventy-five at the current moment and many on the South Shore. We operate with a twenty-five percent legal fee. If we're unsuccessful, there's no fee to the town, there's no appropriation of funds required to engage us. We advance all of the cost in connection with the litigation. If we're unsuccessful, there's no obligation to the town to reimburse us for the cost. That's a risk of the litigation that we assume. We are capping our cost at ten percent of the net recovery. So no matter how large those costs are, that is an absolute ceiling on, on what it would cost. So, you know, a worst case scenario would be a thirty-five percent net from the gross recovery.
The ten percent is, is the cost. I know it's the additional ten percent of the twenty-five percent is, it's going to be capped at ten percent.
Correct. Yes, yes, not, so the fee, attorney's fees and costs would be capped at thirty-five percent.
Thirty-five, okay.
Correct.
How is it that you're going to be able to determine the value, if you will, or the damage, the town of Situate maybe, I'm saying it's going to get, anticipate, given that it's, it's its own separate case? I mean, I realize it's not a class action. I realize it's very similar to the asbestos case. So each case, or each case is going to have its own value.
Correct.
And I, I'm just kind of curious, how is it that Situate's going to have a value? Because it's going to go Ohio, you're going to need presumably information from the town to be able to identify your damages.
Correct.
On behalf of the town.
Yes, yes.
How's that done on other cases, other towns?
Well, we're going to absolutely have to try and determine individualized damages for, for Situate based on the backward looking portion of the damages model.
So what's the model? I guess what I'm curious about is, are you looking solely, God bless, are you looking solely at the town's contribution as to what we do from our budget? Or are you looking more individually, the impact of like, obviously there've been a number of deaths in town, whether it's been identified directly as being heroin, a lot of them have been overdoses and consequently.
Yeah.
Classified as suicide. Are, are those a part of the consideration?
Yep. So, so your question ultimately is a fair one and a good one. How, how do you really quantify or, or come up with a dollar figure for opioid deaths in the community that, heroin deaths, other drug-related deaths, the EMS response, Narcan?
Correct.
All this, it's very, very difficult. There's no doubt. I mean, there are, it, this litigation is the who, is literally a who's who of plaintiff and defense counsel nationally negotiating. The judge appointed already, which was a very aggressive response that he did right out of the gate. He appointed six members of the plaintiff's bar, basically, for this litigation, six of the defense to begin working on a, a settlement structure. And how you compare apples to oranges here, how you compare a major city in the northeast, New York City just filed suit. How you compare New York City to Situate? And how do you compare that to Clay County, Kentucky, which is a client of ours, or Louisville, which is a client of ours, or San Diego, which is a client of ours? Very, very difficult. And, but at some point, there, these cases will need to get resolved. And in order to do that, we need to come up with some model. And it might, and, and what that model is, it might be a special master here locally where we are, we are presenting our damages and like in arbitration and getting assigned a value. That's one thing. There also could be a, a strategy where structures are put in place to identify opioid deaths per capita, EMS responses, numbers of responses, population size. There's a lot of different ways we can try and figure that out. But one of the realities, and this is true with other mass tort litigations too, is that simply because a global settlement offer arises out of the Cleveland multi-district litigation, doesn't mean it's going to be a right fit. There's no guarantee it's a right fit. We could look at those numbers and say, you know, this might work for rural Kentucky, but this doesn't work for Situate, Massachusetts. And for that reason, we have this team in place of nine firms. And it's not a coincidence, Rich Saman from Rodman Rodman Saman, who we, we've been working on this project with, was one of fifty-six law firms that represented the state of California in connection with the tobacco litigation. So there's a tremendous amount of financial resources, human resources, attorney resources, staff resources to be able to potentially reject that offer and bring it back locally for further negotiations or for trial.
So what resources we require of our town employees and for information? What do you anticipate that being?
So one of the benefits of the multi-district litigation is that the primary focus of discovery on the initial phases is the defendant liability. That will guide a lot of the ultimate outcome with the case. So if they pick a few bellwethers, which they will, which is already sort of in the works at this point, so it's extremely unlikely Situate would ever become a bellwether case for trial. But after they select a bellwether, they'll work up the damages on that case. And so the liability picture will be sort of painted by the discovery that's done in Cleveland on the defendants. And there will be some pro forma discovery that will need to be participated and, and completed locally here by Situate. But our firm would, would basically do the work for Situate. We would need to have access to the information. So if it's on a computer, if there's a box somewhere, we need to know where that box is and we got to dig into it. But we don't have any, there's no obligation on the town to commit an employee to this, to commit regular hours to this. There will be a few projects. Now, if we come out of Cleveland and we get an offer and Situate decides, well, we don't want to accept that offer, we want to go to trial, that, with that comes increased obligations, obviously. But in order to get to that place, we would, we would not anticipate significant, a significant undertaking, as opposed to if you filed in state court and superior court here in Massachusetts and you didn't have the benefit of the MDL, well, then you'd be having depositions right out of the gate because it would be gone both ways. But here, the defendants can't, when we retract that, it's not that they can't, but it's not functional, in an early stage of litigation for the defendants to fully discover every single plaintiff that's filing suit. Instead, they need to assess the liability and they need to try some cases to see how a jury responds.
Tony?
Just want, you said that there were some other South Shore towns?
Yep.
What are some of the other ones?
So, as this is a public forum, I just want to be careful that we have, that they're publicly disclosed. So I'd be happy to share. I, I just don't, but it's, there are many South Shore towns.
Is there a timeframe when you would have to get on board or not?
So, you know, we as lawyers are excited about this project and want to work on it and excited for people who want to join to get on as quickly as possible. But there ultimately isn't a, a exterior reason why you, you shouldn't take the time that you need to, to think through it and make a, make a decision if you feel that you all need to do that. We are filing suit on cases and there is a lot of activity happening in the Cleveland litigation. So I would encourage any potential client to, if they were interested, to, to come on board. But there isn't any hard and fast deadline that would impede you from doing it in the future, at least as far as we know.
Is the benefit for you for adding additional towns, for getting that ultimate, um, settlement to be larger?
Well, ultimately, the recovery would be larger because there'd be another party that is, is due to be compensated. So yeah, that, that's ultimately, that's, that's part of it. But that's notwithstanding the very real fact of the matter that I, I personally feel this is a tremendously important litigation. And we often hear a lot in society about lawsuits and lawsuits this and lawsuits that. Oftentimes, when you have a number of, of small plaintiffs coming together to file suit against major, major companies, and I can get into liability if we want to, but I think we all are aware of that. But I will say, three of the many distributors, McKesson, AmerisourceBurger and Cardinal Health are three, three Fortune fifteen companies. So they're three of the fifteen largest companies in the United States and their gross revenue in two thousand seventeen was four hundred and ninety billion dollars, which is a jaw dropping number for three companies. So it's certainly one of the only ways to create change and that's to make it a financial event for them.
So other than the financial things, what's your, what's your goal?
With respect to the litigation? Well, it's to, it's to, it's to put the dollars in, in the local municipalities so that way change, and this is called an epidemic or a crisis for a reason. So I would, you know, candidly say, our lawsuit's not the silver bullet. We're not going to say, hey, we're the only ones who can solve the opioid crisis. It's.
But for, for the companies. So what are you hoping the impact on the, on the producers is? I mean, so we, we get some money, we put some more money in our police department and put some more into our fax organization. But what's the ultimate goal of the loss?
Yeah, so there's a, well, there's a few, few different responses to that. Already Purdue Pharma in Connecticut has cut their sales force by fifty percent and their marketing to doctors by fifty percent. And that was something that has already originated in Cleveland. The judge in Cleveland, and you can Google him if, if you're interested, but there was a New York Times piece on him, took a very, very aggressive response. He sat down at the first hearing and basically said, I'm not going to decide all sorts of legal novel issues that you lawyers want me to decide while people are out there dying from the crisis. We need to get together and I'm going to send you out of here and you need to start working on ways to create change. So injunctive relief is going to be part of this too. It's not just going to be dollars. Obviously, that's a big part of it. But what started this whole litigation in many ways, and what, and I don't know if you've had the opportunity to see the Sixty Minutes special, but the manufacturers, and this will be my, my one brief point on, on the liability piece, but in nineteen seventy in the Controlled Substances Act, Congress basically said, we can't allow these manufacturers to market opioids the same way Ford and Chevrolet market and, because these are dangerous. So free market doesn't work. So what we, and they can't study the people that they're selling to because they're just going to inundate a community with opioids once they find out who's buying them. So they wanted to create a closed system where they put a distributor in the middle. And so it's a closed and blind system where they would sell to the distributor and the distributor would then sell to local pharmacies. The distributors in the Controlled Substances Act had one job and that was to report to the DEA any unusual or suspicious orders. There was a journalist in West Virginia won a Pulitzer Prize after he discovered the number of pills that were going into some of these West Virginia communities and it's jaw dropping. And there was, the most recent one that just came out was Williamson, West Virginia, which is a town of thirty-two hundred people. And they had sold twenty-one million opioids to that town, which is sixty-five hundred pills a person. And those pills aren't staying. Go back to how do you define it? The pills coming into other communities in Massachusetts aren't staying there, they're coming here or going to, so, so they didn't report once. Then they have, in response to this litigation, started reporting to the DEA as they were supposed to do from day one. So the change is, there's a lot of different goals of this litigation. It's to hold them accountable, it's to change their conduct, it's to actually create hard injunctive relief, actual changes to their procedures. Purdue Pharma is an example of that and that's been in the news recently with the cut. And it's also to give the communities tools to not just play defense on this issue, but actually get ahead of it and have money to spend to, to fix it.
A lot of great information. I just, the only thing I could think of, maybe you didn't touch on, so you have cities, municipalities jumping on board early on.
Yeah.
And, you know, they all range in different sizes and then, you know, then you have others coming in later and, you know, do they all benefit the same way? Or do, do the ones that's, you know, jumped on board early on?
Have a, have like a better standing?
Exactly, yeah.
Not, not really, because A, I mean, it's possible that could be the case of settlement was actively being negotiated. At some point, the defendants understandably don't want to negotiate a case and the minute they suggest that they're trying to resolve the case, find out that all sorts of other communities now want to participate. So there often can be rules around that with respect to settlements, but we're not there yet. So I don't foresee any of those issues at this point.
Is there a finite time? You know, I don't know if I was asked earlier, but you know, you know, that there'd be a cutoff date?
Uh, yeah, not, nothing foreseeable.
My only questions are what our counsel, I haven't heard what the counsel, our counsel's response has been to pursuing.
Yeah, I mean, again, I think they're mostly procedural. They had some concerns about the form of the, the engagement letter, questioned some of the ones that John asked about procedurally, what if it's in Ohio, what if it's here, how much work is it going to be? I don't think it was, geez, you shouldn't do this, this is a bad idea. I think it was much more, you know, what about and what if and, and stuff like that.
And I presume that Amory, we have a coordinator for our fax, which has been very good in upstream prevention. She's, has she been consulted?
Yeah, I have to go back and check my emails, but I'm pretty sure I talked to Amory, yeah.
Well, I can't imagine that she would be opposed, but.
No, neither can I.
What she might have to say.
Yeah. I know exactly what she did.
In great detail.
Well, it doesn't, it doesn't appear to be anything but an upside or to part of theory.
No, I mean, I, I, my personal feeling has always been that there should be some form of litigation to, to basically go after these manufacturers and frankly, distributors and even on a lower level, doctors for over-prescribing. And so I have no problems with the idea in theory. The monetary end of it, while it's a great thing for the town, whether we see any, a dime or not, to me, it's, it's altering the behavior. It happened in asbestos, it happened in tobacco, and some of these other product cases where they force companies to actually do the right thing, knowing that, you know, when this, when. when they did the reporting on this earlier, they knew it was highly addictive. So, I mean, somebody needs to pay and unfortunately, the one who's going to pay are the companies and shareholders because they've caused a plague throughout the United States for the almighty dollar. So, I, I think it's a great thing, I have no issues with that. I just, has counsel seen the engagement to represent, Jim?
Yep.
Yeah, okay, because that was the only other thing that I was looking through. They're fine with, with the language as proposed, Jim, or was there any modifications that they wanted?
She didn't give me any modifications. She had, said she had some concerns about different portions of it, but if the board wants to get in, I can have her take a look at that.
I would say that, you know, just one last thing, take a look at it. I think I saw something briefly saying, "In the event that there are any public funds that can pay under the law, then," and I'm like, obviously, it's like a, my feeling is it's a straight-up contingent fee agreement, 25%, capped at 35% with a 10% for cost.
That's correct, yeah.
There shouldn't be any fees to the town, to us, period.
There are no fees, I can explain that, that line if you're interested.
Yeah, because I'm like, I'm sitting there going, under law, even if it says, I don't want to...
So, so that, that...
Our budget, as you can see with our schools, certainly issue and that's just the schools and we have other issues.
Yeah, so there's no, so that, there is a sentence in there addressing a circumstance where the defendants come and they say, "To any municipality." It's the same contract that everybody in mass has signed. The one difference is the 10% is something that has been added in recently because it's just makes it a cleaner issue, so we've had that recently, so, and we're going to memorialize that with our other communities. The appropriation commentary is in there, "In the event if the defendant said, hey, you know, we want to build situat treatment facility, that's what we'll do to settle this case." Well, one of the questions is, how, how does that work with a contingency fee? And so, what the reality is, is that if that were the, or 10 years of free Narcan or something, if that were the case, there would be cash negotiated as part of that settlement. It would, it would just be a necessary way to appropriate attorneys, attorneys 25...
I agree, I, I mean...
So, that without, so that language is in there, an abundance of caution to explain in the circumstance where there is an in-kind settlement for the community, the, there would, one of two things would happen. Either the community, if they had the cash, which almost nobody would, the municipality could pay and say, "Okay, we want the treatment facility built and we'll, we'll appropriate money to pay the attorney's fees, 25% of the net value, whatever that is." Or alternatively, there would be a negotiation where we would have cash as part of it. But, many municipalities say, "We want the cash, we don't want the in-kind anyway." But, those are all things that need to be contemplated in the contract.
No, I, 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 look, if you hire an attorney to do a job, they, they should be paid their, their services, you have a contract. So, I absolutely agree with you on that, I'm just lost where the language was and I, I would think in-kind services, that would not be fair because that's basically using, you know, someone's services and then trying to avoid paying them, that's, that's not fair in any profession. But, I lost it wherever it was, but, so anyway, I have no problems with, with, with doing this, I think it's a good thing, providing it, it alters the behavior, which usually is through the almighty dollar and that would be great for all these companies who've made millions and billions of dollars off the misery and the sorrow of many people who've become victims and who've become slaves to this despicable epidemic of, of drugs. So, I have no problems with that, I mean, I guess the thought is, you know...
So, do we, did you have another question?
No, no, I agree, our small voice can make a difference, we should, we should support this.
Does it make sense to have a motion pending, any, like counsel review?
I agree.
Yeah.
I mean, I support it, but I haven't read this.
I haven't either, I just started looking through it, so, why don't we do this?
Do you want to review the agreement?
How about if we, how about if we give one more time, put it on the agenda one more time? Mr. Amerigan, you, you don't need to be here for it, so we can at least review this, if there are any questions, we can then, you know, have counsel touch base with whatever the differences are with you.
Sure.
You're the contact, correct?
Yes, correct.
So, I mean, that would be great.
Sounds good, is the board an agreement for that?
Absolutely.
Okay, great. Well, we can't thank you enough for taking the time to come down, you know, and I'm pleased to find here and it sounds, you know, it's great cause...
I'm a Hingham resident, so this is a lot easier than, you know, ag-along.
Well, thank you for all your work and for, for joining this cause, it certainly is important to us, so...
Yeah, well, thank you, I appreciate all the thought and thinking about it and talking to me about it.
Appreciate it again, thank you.
Thanks a lot, have a great night.
Thank you very much.
All right.
All right, next is to assign the warrant articles for the Hingle and Special Town Meeting.
One through 20 to the chair.
Sure. So, special, we have, what, two, right?
Yep.
So, that typically, is it two or one?
Two.
Two. So, that's typically the chair, right?
Yes.
Where the heck did I?
Oh, what happened?
Same thing here.
Oh, here, I can show you. All right, I'm all, okay. Article one, probably me.
I think, Madam Chair, you do the first...
The first three?
Four, up to the budget.
Even capital?
Well, I think that, that is always open to debate, if you want to, you can, if you don't, somebody else can do the capital.
So, I'm going to do one, two, let's start capital, keep that, or I'm going to write it in the text.
It comes before, I think.
Okay.
You're going to have to tell some, because we don't have a, we don't have a copy here.
I know, yeah. Technical difficulties here.
Oh, here, one sec.
Do you mind, Tony?
Do you mind, because I, I don't have one.
Oh, here it is.
Jim, if you have one.
Do you have a paper copy of the chair?
Oh.
All right, so we can do it together if you want, Tony.
If you've got a paper copy, tell me, I can take a look.
But then we had technology.
Thank you, Jim.
You're great, it works.
Are you open?
You got it?
Sean, do you need this one?
No, I'm, I'm almost there.
Sean will do five through 18.
Okay, it starts on 129-ish?
On the paper?
Okay.
So, my only thought was, given the length of everything, if someone would contemplate doing capital, I'm happy to do it as well. A $10 million capital, I suspect that's going to be a lengthy discussion, but I, I'm open to that, to handing that off or not.
Okay, that's Article three?
Uh, yes. So, I want to come back to that?
Let's come back to that, we'll see, I mean, look at it.
So, Article five, six, seven and eight are the enterprise funds and just for purposes of knowledge, the advisory board, zero in favor of all those? I can give you an update on that.
I'll do a couple more.
Okay. Which one?
Sean, do you want to use all that?
I'll do whatever, doesn't matter to me.
You're easy.
So, Tony, do you want to do five and six and Sean does seven and eight? Does that make sense?
Well, waterways, I'll do the...
Oh, and there's nine, there's, yeah.
Well, Sean should do waterways, I believe, is on, if I can evolve, I don't know, just...
Tony and I are experts on wastewater.
Right?
All right, so Sean will do five. Do you want to just stay up there and do six?
What, six?
Golf course?
I'll, uh...
He can, he can step up, yeah.
Tony will do six. Seven?
Which one is that?
Wastewater.
I'll do it, Tony, if you, it doesn't matter to me.
I'll do that one.
All right.
Sean, do transfer?
Is that eight, transfer?
Eight is transfer.
Okay.
Is that good, Sean?
Fine.
And then water is nine?
Waterway or water?
Water.
I'll do that.
Three? All right, so now we're Article 10, stabilization fund excess levy. Pretty easy.
I'll do that.
Article 11 revolving fund limits.
I can do that one.
Karen will do 11.
CPC.
Uh, 12 is CPC. Pretty short this year.
Do you want, do you want to do?
Most contested one will be the ball field design.
I'll do that, same if you do, if you do capital.
I'll do capital, all right? I'll take, I'll be happy to do capital, I'll take, I'll take capital.
I mean, I don't mind doing capital, we can...
I'll get up there, I'll take care of it.
Like we've done in the past, so if something comes up and someone knows...
I'm going to say, I'm going to defer to the chair.
That's right.
She can defer to the town administrator and then he can defer to, you know, the finance director and then the finance director can say to the department heads, "Why don't you come on up and answer it?" This will be really fun.
And we'll be here until sometime in June.
So, Tony, you going to do those renovations, the reconciliations or...
No, sure. Karen, you want to do it?
I'm sorry, I was still reading capital and seeing whether I wanted to fight John for it, you know? I'm sorry, what was the question? Please reset the question.
That's easy. We can...
14.
All right, so 14 is the general liability law. Karen, you want to do that?
Can't catch up.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead, just, I'll wait till you get there.
Yeah, that's fine, I can do 14.
Sorry, I have a hard copy and other folks do it, so I apologize.
Okay, I'll do 14.
You'll do 14?
Yep.
All right, so zoning bylaw, marijuana, probably 15 and 16 should be done by one person.
I would be very happy to do those.
Okay. Everybody good with that?
Are you, are you guys going to jump that?
I was going to say, my advice is to move it and then get out of Emery's way.
Yeah, that's kind of what I'm thinking, yeah.
Because she's going to be making a beeline right for that podium.
Well, you know what, it's, I think it's critical, so I'm happy to stand up for it.
All right, so you want to do 15 and 16?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. 17 is the overlay district.
I agree. What are you talking, I'm doing the capital. Well, I'm lining up for the Ellis, I'm happy to...
I'm happy to, I'm, I'll do that.
Whatever, I'll take these two.
Sean, you want to do 17?
And the chair can do a couple more, too.
I can do a couple more, too, I can, I know.
Yeah, where have you been, Mark?
I'll do capital if you want me to, I really, I'm, I'm fine to stand up there for an hour and a half.
You are now, now that I have it, I see.
Exactly.
The flu revolved in front of you?
The flu?
Did you get that one?
All right, I'll do the flu.
Good one.
I'll take, I'll take the tack factory pond land to conservation and I'll take Article 20 dealing with the Ellis property conservation commission.
Okay, wait, is everybody in agreement with that?
I'm not sure, no.
All right. How about the VOTEC amended agreement? The advisory board voted against that because within their amended agreement, it says that they do not have to come before the advisory boards any longer, so I don't blame them for...
Madam Chair, yes, the advisory board is going to take that back up again and they are meeting before town meeting based on information they've received from the superintendent of the South Shore VOTEC.
Oh, good, so they have new information regarding that?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for correcting me, Nancy.
Just new information.
New info.
So, who wants the VOTEC one?
Karen? I'd love to, I'd love to.
You sure?
Yeah, John will be tired.
You know, John needs to, you can only listen to him sometimes, just kidding. I'm just kidding.
And that's it?
Nope, 22.
I'll take 22.
Wait, I thought that was...
So, it says the petitioners?
Yeah, the first one about the last one.
We don't, we don't, do we stand up?
We don't present it, but we, we, we stand and offer our point of view.
Oh, okay, that's fine.
And so far, it's still moving forward. And then 23, South Shore Community Action.
How did we vote on that?
We voted against it.
Against it, right?
Yeah.
If I'm up there, I'm happy to take it, unless somebody else wants to, but I'm happy to.
I don't want.
I can't take it.
Oh, yeah, you can.
I'll take it. So, I'll give anyone, one, two, three, four, five.
I can do, I'll do capital.
Get on my shoulders, everybody. I'll take care of it.
What do we, you have one through four still.
Write it all up and then we can see who has...
Yeah, let's see.
So, I have three, which is capital, and then I have, I got, I got capital and then I've got...
Who's got one and two?
Mara.
Who's got...
Want me to go right through them?
I want to, I can...
Okay, Mara has one and two, John has three, Mara has four, Sean has five, Tony has six and seven, Sean has eight, Tony has nine and 10, Karen has 11, Tony has 12 and 13, Karen has, I can't even remember my own handwriting, 14, 15 and 16. Sean has 17, Mara has 18, John has 19 and 20, Karen has 21, John has 22 and I didn't hear who had 23.
John. So, maybe Tony should pick up something at the end.
Mara should pick up something at the end.
I'll take capital. I can leave something at the end if you want me to, actually...
She's got a big speech in the beginning. Are we going to do that this year?
I have no problems doing it.
Oh, hey, oh, remind me to come back to speeches, okay, sorry.
Those speeches.
I'll do the ones at the end if I have a break.
Want you one?
Should we do the overlay district? Which one?
Sean has the overlay district.
I got five, I'm fine.
And you're not touching it.
All right.
Mara, do you want me to do capital? John, you've got like a...
No, we're good.
And Mara has one and two, both of the ones for the special.
Right. We can review capital if you want to. You're going to have a lot of highly contested issues.
Do you want a tag team on, because you know they're going to be pulling out probably five or six things from capital.
You know what, it's, it's, you've got the department heads if there are any questions and, you know, I'm not worried about it.
Sure, the two big ones, that'll be discussed, the senior center and probably the boat.
Well, I'll jump up on the, I mean, you know, and Steve would be there, but...
So, I'd say, the senior center, the boat and the netting at the golf course will probably be a, a long discussion.
Surprise, surprise, somebody's complaining about the nine trucks.
And also Widow's Walk, the 30,000 will be coming up.
Widow's Walk and...
Yeah, you know, anytime we have the smallest thing on anything always generates the largest, the largest amount of discussion, so, no, but I just know that that's, that'll probably come up just because they get their different lawsuits and, so, that's all.
I got your back.
Are you got anything?
Good.
Any other questions or...
John, 11 trucks. 11 trucks, okay.
11 trucks and four vans.
Yeah, I always liked...
Yeah, a fire truck.
Like matchboxes, you know?
All right.
Now, where do we have to...
All right, so next is the discussion or vote of the sewer deferral, betterment deferral, parcel.
Anybody have that in front?
Yes.
All right, want the motion?
Yeah.
Yes.
Move to grant a sewer betterment deferral for current tax, current year taxes for parcel ID number 14-1-49-0.
Motion by Mr. Harris.
Second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Cantfield, discussion?
Just, just so that people understand, somebody has applied for basically a hardship due to their income, given their age, and so ultimately, we are deferring the taxes on the property until they end up selling the property. And this, this way alleviates their hardship, because, you know, they can't afford it. And so instead of putting them out due to taxes, the board has gone through the information submitted-
The sewer betterment that we're deferring.
Oh, the sewer, all right, well, I don't have it in front of me.
Just to be clear.
But that, that's another, you know, you can do. And so, you know, we talked about it briefly, that, you know, there's a lot of poverty in town, there's no doubt about it. So this is something that helps the individual out, and so they've provided financials, we've looked at them, and they clearly qualify, so that's the basis for it. The tat, the one that's also sold?
For me, hold.
The taxes are, or whatever the, the cost, in this case, the sewer, it's paid plus interest, so that's it.
Thank you for explaining that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?